Mr. Deutsch, with your no vote, you have to explain why you're voting no so it can be recorded for the minutes and Mrs. Urban can use that to make sure it's in the minutes. She'll go through the video and make sure we get it right in the minutes. Mr. Deutsch?
Sure, I didn't think that somebody with a conflict of interest should have been in the room for 5.02.
Okay. Anything else? Is that good?
The vote is five yes, one no, Deutsch, two absent, Brandon Wilk. Motion passed.
Okay. Now, we're moving on to item 10.01, 10.01, which is the Business Partnership Award Winners. We had a little dinner with the award winners earlier. It was great and we thank everybody for coming in. Each year, the Prince William County Schools, Public Schools Office of Community and Business Engagement works closely with business leaders in the community to identify business and community partnerships that are making the most positive impact on academics and student achievement. These partnerships of the year set the bar for what makes a strong and effective collaboration between schools and its community. On behalf of the entire Prince William County School Board, I sincerely thank you for your efforts. Our first Partnership of the Year Award goes to CNA Scientific, represented by Trent Middleton, the Vice President of the company. Representing the Office of Science is Supervisor Julia Renberg and the Science Professional Development Specialist, Joy Green. CNA Scientific donated over $300,000 in brand-new scientific equipment that was distributed to every one of our schools. Through this partnership, every school received grade-level appropriate equipment to use in the classroom. This donation is unique due to the quality of the products they donated, but also because of the professional development that CNA Scientific provided to over 90 of our science teachers, thus allowing them to use the equipment to its fullest potential. We are fortunate to have a local business partner like CNA Scientific that strives to improve science education for all of our students. I now ask CNA Scientific and their school partners to please stand and be recognized. and Mountain View Elementary School. Representing the United States Patent and Trademark Office is Joyce Ward, the Director of the Office of Education and Outreach. From Mountain View Elementary School, joining us this evening is Terry Joffrey, excuse me, the Instructional Technology Coach. The United States Patent and Trademark Office of Education and Community Outreach adds innovation, invention, and real-world challenges to existing programs. Through countless volunteer hours, the students at Mountain View have been exposed to career opportunities and experienced the process of trademarking or patenting their own product. This partnership provides an innovative platform for learning science, learning science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics, also known as STEAM. We thank you for your dedication to our students. I now ask the representatives from the United States Patent and Trademark Office and Mountain View Elementary School to stand to be recognized. We have a lot of great businesses that help our schools. Our third award goes to Wells Fargo, represented by Gary Sims, a Senior Strategy Consultant with the organization. Wells Fargo was nominated by Benton Middle School, represented by their Principal Denise Hebner. Wells Fargo spearheaded the STEM events at Benton to introduce girls and boys to a multitude of careers with a STEM focus. Wells Fargo, as well as donating their own money and resources, garnered the financial support of other Northern Virginia companies to support the events. Through the efforts of Wells Fargo, over 1,350 students have been impacted at the school through mentorship, career exploration, and enhancement of curriculum to showcase industry-best practices. Thank you for creating a robust and interactive STEM program at Benton that connects our students to real-world experiences in the STEM-related industries. I now ask Wells Fargo and their school partner to please stand and be recognized. This year, the review committee was very impressed with our next nomination, Dr. Robert Melvin, who serves on the Spark Board of Directors where he represents the Junior Chapter of the National Society of Black Engineers. Dr. Melvin was nominated by Graham Park Middle School, whose principal, Maria Ramadan, is with us this evening. Through his dedication and passion to better the lives of our students, Dr. Melvin has spent countless hours, to include weekends, where his young men of distinction refurbish computers, volunteer in the community, and so much more. His goal was to empower students by showing them the world of higher education. Dr. Melvin, because of your leadership, you are the 2017 Business Partner in Education, an award only given to an individual who goes above and beyond for our students. Congratulations. And Principal Ramadan, would you please stand? And our final award for the evening will be a first for any organization to receive. Our first official Community Partner of the Year goes to the Prince William County Police Department. Representing the Police Department is Sergeant Dennis Jensen, nominated by Deborah Ellis, Assistant Principal at Minnieville Elementary School. Sergeant Jensen and a group of committed officers from the Police Department started the Minnieville Athletic Club. During club hours, police officers give pep talks, engage in exercise, and promote good behavior in the classroom. Leading by example, students learn that members of the police community are positive influences that keep our schools and neighborhoods safe. Thank you and congratulations on being our first Community Partner of the Year, and I ask that Sergeant Jensen and our school representative, Deborah Ellis, please stand and be recognized. On behalf of the entire School Board, Superintendent Walts, and the Administrative Leadership Team, I thank all of you, I thank all of our more than 1,000 businesses and community partners for what they do for our students and staff. You truly make a difference in the education of our students and demonstrate excellent schools and every, excuse me, and demonstrate excellent schools are everyone's business. And on behalf of the Board, go off script here, I'll repeat a little bit of what I said in the back room there. We honestly can't thank you enough for what you do and the way that you impact each school, which is a member of its own community, and such an important part of what you're able to do to help our children learn, not just book-learn, but learn how to be good members of our county and of our society, and thank you, thank you very much. area modifications that result from the opening of the 13-classroom addition at Lake Ridge Middle School. Any citizen who has signed up to speak on this matter may do so at this time. We have four speakers, I believe, was the add-on? That was to citizens' time, correct? Okay. Oh, it was for public hearing? Thank you very much. Thank you for the clarification. So, we had four speakers sign up ahead of time. It looks like two speakers sign up at the door, so we'll have the six speakers. I will call you out ahead of time so you know the order. If you want to come take a seat in the reserved seating in the front row, you can. The order of speakers will be Rebecca Relahan, Eloise Relahan, Colin Relahan, Said Rahaman, Ruben Carrasco, and Jason Jovic. Those are the six speakers. You'll have three minutes to address the issue of the boundaries that are, this is very specific. It's not like citizens' time where it's wide open. You are here to talk specifically about the boundaries issues here in front of us. You'll get three minutes to speak. The timer will be up above me if I click the right button on my computer, which is a 50/50 coin flip at best, and when it went at 30 seconds, it'll turn yellow. That means it's time to start wrapping it up, and at zero seconds, it'll turn red, and that means it's time to step aside. Please use proper decorum at all times, and the first speaker up will be Rebecca Relahan. Rebecca?
Where's the timer? Oh, okay. Oh, thank you. Okay. Okay. Great. Hi, I'm Rebecca Relahan, and I have three children, Eloise, who goes to Springwoods, and a little boy who goes to St. Matthews next to Lake Ridge Middle, and an infant. First, I'd like to thank you for hearing our input. I'm here tonight to show support for Plan 3, which is moving Old Bridge Estates to Lake Ridge Middle. After watching the May 3rd School Board Meeting video, I noticed that there's a lot of support for Plan 5, and I'd like to speak on how Plan 3 meets the criteria of Regulation 264-2 by discussing transportation, geographic progression, unity of small neighborhoods, and overcrowding. For transportation, Plan 3 is twice as good at improving transportation relief than Plan 5. Also, Plan 3 is the closest neighborhood to Lake Ridge Middle School out of the three plans, and while Plan 2B does provide the most relief for transportation, it goes against what the Westridge families fought for, which is to stay together. Plan 3 greatly improves transportation efficiency and maintains moving an entire community together, keeping us with our HOA and keeping us with the rest of Springwoods Elementary. This is not the case with Plan 5, because even after removing the Colby Drive area, there will still be students in the south and the east of that neighborhood at Rockledge Elementary who will remain at Woodbridge Middle School. Plan 3 allows for Old Bridge Estates to move to Lake Ridge Middle School with the rest of Springwoods. We are currently the only neighborhood that goes to Springwoods that does not move on to Lake Ridge Middle. Moving on to concerns of overcrowding, after watching Dr. Cartage present the plans, he mentioned that 2B was hitting that ceiling of capacity in which it may or may not need to be included in redoing the boundaries for 2020, whereas Plan 3 and Plan 5 are just a little over 100% capacity by 2020. My other kids will be going to elementary school and preschool in Lake Ridge, but my oldest will be bused across town. It doesn't make sense. It will reduce her opportunities to participate in the after-school activities along with her time with her family due to the longer commute. For us personally, the middle school bus comes down Purdum, our bus stop, anytime between 3:30 and sometimes as late as 4:00 when her bus comes, which simply is unacceptable. The bottom line is that Old Bridge Estates is further from Woodbridge Middle School than Colby Drive neighborhood and slightly closer to Lake Ridge Middle School. Does Plan 5 balance the demographics better? Minimally, only by 1% to 2% in the three areas of demographic variables looked at. Those demographics are something that can be looked at again when the committee meets in 2018 to redraw the boundaries for the remaining middle schools affected by the opening of Potomac Shores in 2020. However, the proximity of Old Bridge Estates to Woodbridge Middle and Lake Ridge Middle cannot be changed. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Eloise Relahan. Hold on, Eloise. Mr. Iman will be right with you. Eloise, you get 20 minutes.
Hi, my name is Eloise. I'm in first grade at Springwoods. My school is amazing and my teacher is great. Springwoods is very close to my house. I went to preschool at St. Matthews because it's also close to my house. Preschool is right next door to Lake Ridge Middle School. When I leave Springwoods, I want to go to Lake Ridge Middle because it's so close to my house and it is a shorter bus ride. My friends will all go to Lake Ridge, too. I don't understand why we don't get to go to the school that is so much closer to our house. It is very hard to sit on the bus for a long time. Please vote for Plan 3 at Old Bridge Estates so that I can go to Lake Ridge Middle. Thank you for listening.
And our next speaker is Colin Relahan.
Would you like to?
And to balance it out, Colin, you get one minute. So, yeah, no, three minutes.
Well, I think my daughter made some of the better points there anyways, so she's actually been wanting to speak at one of these meetings ever since the recess pepper alley a while back, but I just wanted to add, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I just wanted to add to what my wife's kind of already said, particularly focused on Plan 3 is really the best choice when you take a look at geography and transportation efficiency. By the numbers, there's an obvious improvement between, for Plan 3 over Plan 5, 2.7 miles versus 1.5 miles, but really those advantages extend beyond the numbers. Why is that? Well, let's take a look. A bus leaving the Colby Drive area immediately pops out onto Minnieville and can go down Minnieville and Telegraph, and there are no stop signs, and it's just basically a straight shot to Woodbridge. Old Bridge Estates is the last neighborhood, is the only neighborhood for Woodbridge Middle that sits on Smoketown Road. Ever driven down Smoketown Road and as early as 3:30, you hit one stop sign at Cavalier, one stop sign in Chancellor, one at the other road further south, and each time, that bus can get stuck, you know, behind a dozen cars or even more. And each time of those, that just keeps adding time, and again, it ends up with my children being more than a half hour later on the bus, and those are the types of things that we just really feel that we can best avoid if Old Bridge Estates is included into the Lake Ridge Middle School area. Another factor which I would like to point out, which is, again, my wife brought up the next boundary change, which from everything, I've gone to enough of these meetings now to know that the next boundary change for the Potomac Shores Middle School is likely to be a much bigger deal, much bigger adjustment. Taking a look at the boundaries for Woodbridge Middle as they exist, with Plan 5, you end up leaving all of that northwestern arm intact and going to Woodbridge Middle, both Westridge as well as Old Bridge Estates. What does that mean? Well, that means you have parents in both neighborhoods, and this was raised during some of the Boundary Commission meetings. In the next round, does that mean because we're kind of stuck off on an island or peninsula there, does that mean both Westridge and Old Bridge Estates parents have to worry about being moved into Benton, into Bevel? And if you don't move any of those neighborhoods now, does that mean there are twice as many neighborhoods worried about being moved into Bevel? Does that mean there are twice as many neighborhoods worry about being moved into Goodwin? And so on and so forth. If you stick with Plan 3, which is, it advantages both in terms of transportation and in terms of having less of an overcrowding problem as Plan 2B, you can't eliminate that type of hard choices that will be made, but you can at least reduce the number of hard choices as a result of that by, you know, already moving one neighborhood over and not having to worry about the next round. With that, thank you for your, thank you for this time. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our last speaker that signed up ahead of time is Said Rahaman. Said?
Hi. Well, thank you, board members, for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Said Rahaman. I'm a father of a growing family in Old Bridge Estates, and I'm here to speak on support of Plan 3, moving the Old Bridge Estates children to Lake Ridge Middle School. And as it's been said already, as you know, the distance is certainly a big factor. From our house, it's about one and a half miles or about five minutes, and that's during the rush hour drive from our house to Lake Ridge Middle School versus Woodbridge Middle School, that's over five miles, and driving time, that's about 20 minutes. So, it's significantly longer, about four times. So, this time savings, it works out actually a huge amount of time for working families and also for just the fuel savings, and that's, that time savings is not just for the families, but also for the schools as well of the buses and the fuel costs that also the schools have to incur for transporting the kids. The time savings that the kids get, that can be in turn used back for extracurricular activities or extra help with teachers. So, and having Old Bridge Estates zoned for Lake Ridge Middle Schools, that will help keep our kids that went to school with their friends and companies in Springwoods Elementary, helps keep them together as they, as they move on. And I could also say that now, being in Old Bridge Estates for a number of years, that there's certainly a wide variety of families, various races and backgrounds and so on that adds to the overall just diversity and mix of Lake Ridge Elementary, Lake Ridge Middle School. And having, having Old Bridge Estates assigned now to Lake Ridge Middle School, it's possible with the rezoning that's been talked about for the future, that it could help minimize another transition for the kids, which that, that stability helps, as I'm sure educators know, that helps foster education and just keeps the kids happier with the stability. And as you know, Old Bridge Estates, it's just the community size is smaller than some of the other communities being talked about, so you can move the entire community of Old Bridge Estates in one, over to Lake Ridge Middle School. But in closing, I'd just like to say, you know, Plan 3 does support our families with bigger time savings and more stability, which in turn helps us focus more on the education of our children. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Have a good night.
Thank you, sir. All right, and we're two, the last two speakers of the public hearing. The next speaker is Ruben Carrasco. Ruben? Signed up at the door, Ruben? Going once, going twice? All right. And then Jason Jovic. Jason?
There's been a lot of cases made from the previous speakers for keeping Old Bridge Estates in. I don't want to repeat what's already been said. I am concerned about the long bus ride for my kids and the after-school activities. I echo those same concerns. I have two perspectives. Growing up in Pennsylvania, the friends that I had in elementary school, they just carried through, through middle school and high school. Like, I grew up, that was a given, and moving to DC in the late 90s and then having kids now, and I have, I have two sons, first and second grade at Springwoods Elementary right now, the friendships I have, I still have to this day. My best friend growing up is still my best friend today. He lives in Pittsburgh. We were best, best men in each other's wedding, were uncles to each other's kids. If we went to different middle schools and different high schools, I don't know if we would, we would have that. So, when I asked my kids a while back about how everything is set up, I said, hey, you know, there's a good chance that some of the friends that you have now, and there's about, you know, first and second graders, they've got about three or four core, core friends that they hang out with and do, and play baseball and play soccer with, and I said, so, you know, there's a really good chance that you're not going to be able to go to middle school with them. They were sad, you know, when I, when I, when I mentioned it to them, and they said, well, is there anything we can do? And, you know, I said, well, there may be some ways, but then this whole thing came up about, you know, with the reboundering, and they kept asking me, like, you know, what can I do? I don't know what your family credos are, if you guys have any family rules that you work by. The one that my wife and I developed, probably whenever my kids were about three or four, was what family stands for. Forget about me, I love you. So, I told them, I'll do everything I can to make sure that you're happy, you can stay with your friends. Quality of education is still there with Prince William County Schools. I'm a big advocate of that, but I would like my kids to not have that shakeup, not have to make new friends when they go to middle school, whenever they do have friends that are in Springwoods, and there is an option. There is an option that they would stay together and go to Lake Ridge Middle. That's all I have. Thank you so much for listening to everyone. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. With there being no other citizens who have signed up to speak at this matter, I declare this public hearing closed. We'll have a couple second pause before we begin the, the public meeting. I'd like to call to order the Prince William County School Board meeting for, what is today? May 17th, 2017. We'd like to start today's School Board meeting with a moment of silence at the request of Ms. Diane Ralston of the Neapsco District. Thank you. Next up is the pledge. Do we have any students in the audience who can help lead us in the pledge? Any students? I'm seeing a few. Come on up. Come on up. Yeah. Don't let her stand here by herself. There's other students in here somewhere, isn't there? All right. There we go. We're gonna, everyone, if you please, rise for the pledge, and there we go. And then after the pledge, tell us your name and where you go to school. Remind us again what your name is, where you go to school.
Thank you, Dr. Melvin. Thank you very much.
My name is Eloise, and I go to Springwoods.
All right, we are on to approval of the public meeting agenda. Ms. Jessie? Microphone, microphone. 1401, I'm sorry, I should have announced that. Item 1401.
Sorry about that. I'm not on the right. Oh, I got it. Okay.
No, you're on concern.
No, I know, I'm not on 1401.
There you go.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I'm sorry. Mr. Chairman, I move that the Prince William County School Board approved the public meeting agenda as recommended.
Thank you, Ms. Jessie. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Williams?
I'd like to second.
Thank you. Discussion? Those in favor of the motion, please signify yes by raising your right hand. Thank you. Those opposed? Thank you. Thank you.
The vote is five yes, one no, Deutsch, two absent, Brand, and Wilk. Motion passed.
Thank you. And moving on to the adoption of the consent agenda. Ms. Williams?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting consent agenda as recommended.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Jessie.
I second.
Thank you. Discussion? Discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Deutsch.
I would like to ask that item 15.07 be pulled from the consent agenda.
Would the clerk please pull item 1507 from the agenda? I mean, I'm sorry, not pull it completely from the agenda, pull it off of consent. I apologize, I misspoke. Pull it off of consent. I assume that's what you're saying, Mr. Deutsch. Pull it off of consent, please. Yes, that's fine. Yeah, move it down to board members. Okay, we're back to the main motion with Ms. Williams as the maker of the motion, Ms. Jessie seconded it. Is there any discussion on consent? Those in favor of the motion, please signify yes by raising your right hand.
The vote is six yes, two absent, Brand, and Wilk. Motion passed.
Okay. Sorry, let me skip down here a little bit. As we normally do when we pull stuff off consent, we handle the thing that we pulled off immediately. So we'll, we will need a, I'll make a motion to approve the school board meeting minutes for May 3rd, 2017. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Williams?
I second.
Thank you. Discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Deutsch.
I'd like to offer a substitute motion that we amend the minutes to include the motion to suspend the rules that happened at the end of the meeting that wasn't included.
The, those types of parliamentary moves aren't, and have never been included in the minutes, they're, they're just up here, they're just procedural moves. The only thing that's in the minutes is, the only thing that's in the minutes is like agenda items, things that make the agenda is what makes the minutes. It's just how, it's how, it's done through board docs and all of that. So basically, it's not how the minutes are done, because they're done based on the agenda. So I will rule the motion out of order, because they're not, that's not how it's taken. Yes, ma'am?
I'd like to appeal that ruling, because according to FOIA and according to Virginia Code, it was a legal vote that all of us voted on, except for Ms. Jessie, who'd walked out. It was a legal vote during a legally held meeting, and just because somebody doesn't like the vote, doesn't mean that we can change the minutes.
No, it's not a matter of my liking it, it's just a matter of, no, let's just be per-
I second the motion to appeal the ruling of the chair.
Sure. Well, first of all, you know, thank you for the second. So let me, let me explain, because I get to speak first when there's, when there's appeal to decisions of the chair. This isn't something that I made up or has nothing to do with me liking or not liking it. This is simply how this has been done, even the board before me, these procedural things that make, I don't have, I don't communicate with the clerk about the minutes, they're just produced by board docs that, when it makes the agenda. And so there's been obviously other times. So this is, this has never been brought up before as something that needs to be done, and my understanding of it is that the way, the way board docs is done is that, and obviously this is done with the VSBAs approval and how they communicate and how we do minutes, that's basically how it's done. So anything that makes the agenda, of course, makes the minutes, but if it's not on the agenda, then it doesn't make the minutes. Those are kind of internal, internal questions that we're taking on the dais. So that is, it's not, it's not my definition of it by any means, it's simply how it's been done. So I just want to make sure we're on the same page there. It has nothing to do with my opinion of what was done, but just how it's been done in the past and how I understand it to be. Now, it's your motion, Ms. Satterwhite, so if you'd like to comment, you have the floor next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I hear what you're saying, but I completely don't agree. It was a legal vote taken in a legal school board meeting, and according to Virginia Code and FOIA, just like the January 3rd special meeting, when you have a legal vote, it needs to be recorded in the minutes. You cannot just erase that it happened. It's on tape, it happened, people have talked to me in the public since it happened. Whether or not, we're not going to talk about the result of it, we're talking about the vote has to be recorded, the four, two, one vote has to be recorded, and there is a law for that. And Mrs. Urban is usually very, very good about putting these things into the agenda, and so I'm, into the minutes, and so I, I don't think it's Mrs. Urban, but I would like to, I would like to say, Mr. Chairman, this needs to go in the minutes. We have a legal obligation to record this vote in the minutes. It happened, it has to be recorded.
Mr. Chairman, could I read the statute for you, so that-
As long as it doesn't, you don't, as long as you don't believe it breaks privilege to read it.
No, I don't. It's just a matter of, it's just a matter of the Virginia Code says-
Sure.
Virginia Code Section 2.23707 of FOIA, "Minutes shall be in writing shall include the date, time, and location of the meeting, the members of the public body recorded as present and absent, and a summary of a discussion on matters proposed, deliberated, or decided, and a record of any votes taken."
I guess my question is, is that, when it means votes, does it mean on, again, following past procedure and having reviewed quite a lot of this and watched a lot of board meetings, especially when I was running for office, and when these types of motions were made on the dais in the past, decisions of the chair were challenged, or the rules were suspended, or whatever the case may be, these types of things have never made the minutes in the past. So is this, is this something that we as a board should go back through a lot of past minutes and make sure that we get this corrected over the, because there was a challenge, we, several months ago, we challenged the decision of the chair, and that was discussed on the dais, and I don't believe this, that was brought up then, these types of procedural things. So I agree that a vote was taken almost in a straw poll way, I guess is the way that I look at it when it comes to these procedural tactics, and I'm asking a question, does it, does it mean specifically anything that's on the agenda that is voted on? Because obviously, I wouldn't, I wouldn't disagree with you there, I just mean it from the, from the governance perspective.
Clearly, the statute says that any vote taken needs to be recorded in the minutes. I've sat with this board from 2004 to 2011, and I'm not aware of that ever occurring, where we didn't have something recorded in the minutes.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Williams.
I'm curious to know if the, if it was a legal vote that was taken, why it wasn't added to the minute, to the minutes, and why this wasn't done in prior minutes? I mean, Debbie is extremely capable of taking minutes and has always done a stellar job. So I'm confused as to why this became an issue, and if these type of votes were not recorded in the past, why this, all of a sudden now, has become an issue, and why the need to go back and rewrite the minutes if we've not done it in prior years. I just want to make sure that we're in compliance, because if this is something that we're going to start now, I would think that we would have to go back and do it for all of the other meetings to be in compliance with the law as well. So what is it, which answer is it? Is it every prior session, and Debbie's going to have to go back and change all of the meeting minutes from the past? Or how do we legally, I feel like this is a legal issue more than a recording issue, because if we do it now, then we would have to do it in years prior, correct?
I'm not, I'm not aware of any particular meeting where this ever happened before. If anybody can point me to that, I would appreciate it, but this is kind of unheard of.
Do we know why that wasn't recorded? I can't answer that question. If it-
Can Debbie answer that?
I mean, I don't think it's necessarily, I don't think it's necessarily good to put Debbie on the spot at the moment. I mean, these, these types of things, again, I don't believe we've ever had a conversation about the minutes ever, they've just popped onto the thing. So just how board docs records them is what's on, it's just the way it's been done. It's not something that I've ever looked into, other than noticing that they haven't popped on before. So anyway, I mean, if the board wants to, well, we, first of all, we have, we have a vote to overrule the decision of the chair. I think this is something certainly, to wrap this up, unless someone else wants to go, because I'll get the final word here. Willie, do, Mr. Deutsch, would you like to talk?
Two, two points real quick. There was a reference to the vote, I think, last fall to overturn the decision of the chair. There actually was no vote there, because it was just ruled out of order and we weren't allowed to have a vote. That's why there is no recording of that vote, because the vote wasn't allowed to happen. Secondly, I think what happens largely with minutes is an export of what happens in board docs. I don't believe that the time the vote was taken, that things slowed down enough for this to be added into board docs to record the vote, and that's probably where things happened. So if we slow down enough to add the votes into board docs, then it'll be right there for us to record.
Thank you. All right, again, just going off of past practices, and I'm happy to review this in the future, and we can look into board docs and how the best way to record this is, but a simple majority takes to overrule the decision of the chair. Those who vote in favor of the chair to say that this, to rule this out of order, please raise your hand. Ms. Williams? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can you restate the vote, please?
Yes. The motion is, the motion is basically, a yes vote is that you agree with the chair that the motion is out of order, a no vote is that you do not agree with the chair that the motion is out of order.
Point of order, the motion is to overrule the decision of the chair, so a yes vote would be to agree to overrule the decision of the chair.
Actually, the Roberts Rules of Order says when you do the, when you do the, when you do, go to overrule the decision of the chair, that you put it into the affirmative of the chair's decision. So, yeah. Is there a question? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut it off if there was still a question, that was not my intent. Ms. Williams, you still have a question?
Yes, I'm sorry. Procedural, we had a motion that was on the floor, then Mr. Deutsch amended the motion.
Yes, so we're, we're, well, there's a motion on the floor by Mr. Deutsch that I ruled out of order. So before, we don't even have a second on that motion yet, because I ruled it out of order. So we're basically voting on, again, excuse me, a yes vote to say whether or not you, again, it takes, it takes a majority of the board to overrule, a simple majority to overrule the decision of the chair. So it, I'm basically saying, the vote is going to be, it's a yes vote if you agree with the chair, it's a no vote if you don't agree with the chair. Does that make sense? It, I'm sorry.
It makes sense.
We don't do this a lot, so there's a lot of questions, I apologize.
It makes sense. I'm still questioning the legality of what it is we're doing. Call me crazy, I think board docs does a good job, I'm just still really stuck and confused on how board docs would not record something that we're supposed to record. I would think it would be automatic, regardless of the speed of which we are speaking, because that's the whole point of having board docs, is it captures everything? Isn't that how it works? Okay, so board docs is not-
It just, it just, board docs captures what's on the agenda, and if there's action on the agenda, that's simply what it captures. So had the, had it passed, and we put something on the agenda, then it would have been captured. But that, again, that's just, that's how it's worked. Okay. Ms. Satterwhite?
I will point out again, it was a legal vote, it did happen, we can't negate that, and all of us, except for Ms. Jessie, did take part in it, and to not have this in the minutes is in violation of FOIA and Virginia Code.
Again, I'll wrap it up here. I'm absolutely not opposed to the conversation. You know, obviously, to have this conversation on the dais makes it a bit awkward, I was certainly would have glad, been glad to engage in this conversation at any point in time ahead of time to give, time to review the same laws that you already seem to have ready to go. But basically, what I'm going to default-
I have a substitute motion.
Okay, well, we don't, we don't have a motion, we got to rule on this first, before we can make any substitute motions. We have to rule on this. So basically, like I said, I'm certainly not opposed to this, but the way I understand it now is this is how we've always done it, and then we can, if it passes, if it doesn't pass, we can go from there. But, so we'll just go ahead and vote on this. Those in favor, those agreeing with the decision of the chair, decision of the chair that the motion is out of order, please raise your right hand. Okay. Two? Ms. Jessie? Three. All right. Those opposed to the decision of the chair? The motion is ruled out of order, three to three. We are back to the, we are now on to the main motion, that the Prince William County School Board, just to be clear, Ms. Urban, in case we want to talk about this later, the three, the three yes votes in favor of the chair were Ms. Williams, Mr. Sawyers, and Ms. Jessie, the three no votes were Ms. Satterwhite, Ms. Ralston, and Mr. Deutsch. We are on the main motion, that the Prince William County School Board approve the school board meeting minutes for May 3rd, 2017. Any additional discussion? Mr. Deutsch?
Well, it doesn't include all the votes, so we shouldn't approve it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay. Ms. Jessie, or, Ms. Jessie. Ms. Williams?
I would like to add a substitute motion.
Okay. What is your substitute motion?
I would like to move that the Prince William County School Board table this issue until further investigation and research on what occurred and the proper thing to do.
Second.
Hold on one second, I'm sorry, I got to get that typed in first, before I, let me How would you like to go? Ms. Williams' motion's a substit, it's a substitute motion, that the Prince William County School Board postponed indefinitely this motion until, it's not tabled, just so we know technically by Roberts Rules, it's not tabled, which means we take it up later in the meeting. It's to postpone indefinitely this motion until the board has a better understanding of the laws and procedures, including past practices. I will second that motion, I think that's, I think that's a fair substitute motion. Any further discussion on that? No? Okay. Those in favor of this motion, please signify yes by raising your right hand. I second it, yes, yes, I second it. So I'm sorry, Ms. Williams, Ms. Jessie? Williams, Jessie, Ralston, and what's my name? There it is. Sawyers? Not present, those two? Those opposed? Sorry, lots of buttons to click when there's amendments, I apologize.
The vote is four yes, Sawyers, Jessie, Ralston, and Williams. Two, two no, Deutsch and Satterwhite, two not present, Brand and Wilk. Motion passed.
Okay, now we're on to the main motion, which includes the substitute motion that Ms. Williams just passed. So essentially, if there's no further discussion, it's basically the same vote again, but we have to pass the main motion, which again, is made by me, seconded by Ms. Williams. Those in favor of the main motion, please signify yes by raising your right hand. It's, it's the main motion, which includes the substitute motion we just voted on. Thank you. Ralston, Sawyers, Jessie, and Williams. Those opposed? Mr. Deutsch and Ms. Satterwhite? Make sure I got that right, I apologize, hold on.
The vote is four yes, two no, two absent. Motion passed.
I would like to point out for the record, that because this was part of consent agenda originally, anything less than a unanimous vote would say that it fails. So in this particular case, board docs is saying the motion fails, because it's not part of, because it was normally part of the consent agenda, which requires unanimous vote, but since it was pulled off consent agenda, it does not require unanimous vote to pass. So this is computer, a little bit of computer communication issues here, just to be perfectly clear, that it says motion fails, but that's because the computer thinks it has to be a unanimous vote, but because we pulled it off of consent agenda, it does not have to be a unanimous vote. Civics lesson, everybody. So make sure we cover that. All right. Let me scroll back up. All right. We are on 1601, which is citizens' comment time. The same kind of rules apply that we just had at the budget hearing, oh, excuse me, the boundary, the public hearing, excuse me, too many hearings. The budget hearing, we have, Ms. Urban, is it correct that there's nobody signed up at the door? Okay, thank you. We have everyone who signed up ahead of time, we have one big, massive joint speaker, which is Brianna, Josephine, Nicholas, Peyton, Haley, and Sally, all from Colgan High School. And then our second speaker is Rachel Harvey, third is Edward Agaman, fourth Steve Bender, and five is Riley O'Casey. The same rules apply, you'll get three minutes to talk, yellow 30 seconds, red zero seconds, step aside, all that happy stuff, use proper decorum at all times, and- seconds, step aside, all that happy stuff, use proper decorum at all times, and that should do it. So our first speaker is group speakers from Colgan High School, Brianna Heckert, Josephine Burke, Nicholas DeGuzman, Peyton Brooks, Haley Stanley, and Sally Bell. Please come forward.
Hi, Chairman Sawyers, members of the school board, and Dr. Walts. I'm Brianna Heckert, this is Josephine Burke, Nicholas DeGuzman, Haley Stanley, and Jalen Wesley. Good evening. We are here to tell you about the most dynamic new club in Prince William County. The Finn Friends is a club at Colgan High School dedicated to creating interactions, hosting events, and building relationships between all students.
All with the goal of creating an inclusive school community. We are particularly happy that the students who formerly attended Independent Hill School are members of the Fins. We have loved getting to know these students and their families.
We host gatherings at Colgan Sporting Events and CFPA performances. We have monthly pool and pizza parties and hangouts at local restaurants. We have a shark park project in which anyone sitting alone at lunch is greeted by a friend.
We have monthly parties in their rooms and enjoy seeing them have fun at events. The motto of our club is "There is Awesome Power Beneath the Surface." The most exciting part of the Finn Friends is that, that we are just getting started. Every day we are growing and helping create Colgan culture.
We would like you all to be honorary members of the Finn Friends. We would also like to present a Finn Friend hat to Dr. Walts.
Sorry, I make a motion to make Dr. Walts put the hat on? Yeah.
Never had so much fun in your life in the shear, have you, Dr. Walts?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Per agenda item, that will rotate down the dais for every agenda item, just so you know. Ms. Urban, you're not out of the loop, you're, you're, you're in the circle, you're in the circle. Our next speaker is Rachel Harvey. Rachel?
Good evening, Chairman Sawyers, school board members, and Dr. Walts. My name is Rachel Harvey, and I'm a senior at Forest Park High School. On May 20th, this upcoming Saturday, my senior class is sponsoring our annual suicide awareness walk. The walk is a safe place to speak about mental illness and suicide prevention in Prince William County, subjects that are often ignored, or it can be a little bit awkward to talk about them, especially with students such as us. Lieutenant Governor Ralph Northam, Congressman Gerald Connolly, and Virginia Senator Jeremy McPike will all be in attendance, and thank you to all of you who have already RSVP'd, I really appreciate that. And along with them, professional, healthcare professionals from our schools, our military community, and some of my fellow students from Prince William County will be speaking. The suicide awareness walk is a setting for conversation, rather than a place to talk over those with mental health issues. We want our students and community to know that Prince William County is here to listen. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Edward Augaman? Edward? I apologize if I, yeah, just correct me, everyone up here does, so you might as well.
It's actually pronounced "Adgeman."
Adgeman, thank you very much.
My name is Edward Adgeman, as you all know. I'm the president of AmegU, Sedutorian Freedom High School, and I would like to give acknowledgement and many thanks to the executives, faculty, administration, and most of the teachers at Prince William County High School, to making AmegU where you're wonderful, and enrichment youth academic program for the students of the chapter of AmegU, Denver, Virginia. The AmegU program executed over three to five activities that included community service projects in Prince William County High School and surrounding areas, college lectures and field trips to the Virginia State University of College Engineering of Virginia Tech, mentoring sessions that include multiple team and building exercises, and lastly, build, building new foundation friendships and networks of future college education men, for educated men with students from Prince William County High School. I'd like to give a special thank you and acknowledgement to the principals of the partner AmegU campus, Kevin Smith, Giovanni Mitchell, Suzanne Bevins, Michael Wright, Agnes Bryant. Thank you for all your support, encouragement, and services to Prince William County High School and community of AmegU and AmegU SciFi. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
And I would also like to present this yearbook to Dr. White, Dr. Walts, sorry.
Dr. Walts is going to need an extra tape. The good thing Mr. Wilk's not here, you can use his space to kind of put, spread all your stuff around. Mr. Bender, you're correct, you, you are next, yes. Mr. Bender?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Steve Bender, my records, my address is on file with the clerk. Tonight, I was asked to address the parliamentary fiasco that occurred last meeting on the motion to suspend the rules. Number one, Mr. Sawyers, the question revolved around a potential suit by you against your colleagues, and any reasonable person would consider that a conflict. Why you did not immediately hand the gavel to Ms. Jessie and ask her to preside while you let the room, is beyond me. You had no business presiding in that situation. But in your defense, Roberts does give you sole jurisdiction over whether or not it's a conflict. You then asked the rather inventive question about which rule Mrs. Satterwhite was moving to suspend, but the motion is to suspend the rules. That's all the rules, and there's no requirement to state which rules or rules are affected by the motion. According to Roberts, the motion to suspend is non-debatable. Number three, after it was seconded, you allowed debate on that motion. Once he seconded, the vote should have been called without further discussion. Number four, when the vote was taken, you didn't announce the vote. You simply ruled it defeated. Mr. Deutsch questioned that, and you said it was two against and an abstention. You didn't even announce the four votes in favor. I was curious why Mrs. Urban didn't announce the vote like she does with every other recorded vote. Mr. Deutsch raised a point of order that it was a two-thirds majority and therefore passed. Number five, in response to Mr. Deutsch's point of order, you explained, as we learned in our training earlier, abstentions count, but you failed to mention that your instructor, Mr. Thomas Bolsh, not only said that abstentions don't count as a recorded vote when it's two-thirds present voting, but you engaged in an argument on that point with a professional parliamentarian who is among the elite group of ten that are charged with editing and updating Roberts Rules of Order. Number six, the change to the amend, the agenda policy gave you unanimous control, and therefore, it wasn't a two-thirds vote, it really was a unanimous vote, except for violations of law. State law makes, using your public position to deny any person a right otherwise protected a class one misdemeanor. Since the right to counsel is a right protected by law, you used your public position to deprive your colleagues of that right. Proper parliamentarian would advise against you. Exception doesn't apply, someone would have appealed, a simple majority, as tonight we saw could overturn that, and if it was still four-two, it would have passed. Number seven, meeting, meeting minutes, as we discussed earlier, didn't record any of this, and you created an inaccurate record if it's not fixed. We're talking about criminal violations, Mr. Sawyers. Everyone hoped you would grow into this office, and you have. You've become positively presidential, but why did you pick Nixon and Trump as your models? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Riley O'Casey. Ms. O'Casey?
Good evening, Chairman Sawyers, board members, Dr. Walts. My name is Riley O'Casey, and my address is on file. If you spend any time on social media these days, you will read about the frustrations regarding SOL testing. While these are state mandated tests, the frustrations by our, the frustration shared by our educators are real. The state SOL Innovation Committee over the last two years has reduced the number of SOL tests taken, and this is good for our students. However, at some point, something has to be done to reduce testing on the local level. As a nation, a state, and a county, we are overtesting our children. Traditional multiple choice assessments, unit tests, benchmarks, end of year tests, usually require a time for review, reflection, and remediation. This takes away crucial, crucial instructional time for our students. Teachers are then required to spend an unreasonable amount of time analyzing the data, meeting and discussing the data with colleagues, and document, excuse me, documenting the data in multiple spreadsheets. This takes them away from the crucial planning time needed to create those lessons that involve creativity and critical thinking. During a recent conversation with a group of educators, it was shared with me that the amount of instructional time lost due to the amount of tests given in one year averaged five days. That's five days lost because of testing. Other educators have shared the following. A team of elementary teachers were required to give an average of thirty-five tests over the school year. Several middle school teachers from across the division added up the number of benchmarks their students took in one year, twenty-two. That's twenty-two benchmarks in one year, and this does not include unit tests and informal assessments. Several high school students with whom I have spoken, on average, take two tests a week over the course of a school year. Accountability is expected. Overtesting our students unfortunately has become the norm. The crucial conversations have started, and action needs to be taken. What tests are effective? What tests can be eliminated? PWEA and PWCS worked together to reduce the educator workload. I hope we can continue to work together to reduce the amount of testing for our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Casey. Moving on to item seventeen point zero one, Fred M. Lynn Middle School Corrective Action Plan Update.
Good evening, Chairman Sawyers, Vice Chairman Jessie, members of the school board, and Dr. Walts. Joining me this evening is Fred Lynn Middle School Principal George Neves. We appreciate this opportunity to provide the school board with an update on the school's corrective action plan.
Good evening, Chairman Sawyers, Vice Chairman Jessie, members of the school board, and Dr. Walts. This slide captures the first two essential actions that focus on implemented literacy and instructional practices that support student literacy and accelerating EL learning. At the March 20 meeting, VDOE requested that at Fred Lynn's next triennial update meeting scheduled for July 31st, we identify student work that's samples that show growth tied to those changes in instructional practices that have taken place through the essential actions. The essential actions also call for a reporting of observations and walkthroughs that are part of the plan's progress monitoring requirements. Since our last presentation, we conducted observations in many classrooms to include four sixth grade, four seventh grade, and four eighth grade language arts, and four reading specialists, and two eighth grade science classrooms. The acting director of the Office of EL Programs and Services, EL Specialists, and Title One PD Specialists assigned to Fred Lynn Middle School join Fred Lynn's administrators. Division Classroom Look Force Tool and Four Square Reflection Protocol Tool for Instructional Coaches were used to note observations for teacher actions talk, students' work talk, and task. Descripted feedback was shared on the same or the following day with observed teachers. Slides four through six provide an example of a literacy practice, observation evidence, and student work sample that shows growth tied to changes in instructional practices that have taken place through the essential actions. The literacy practice is reciprocal teaching. Reciprocal teaching refers to an instructional activity in which students work independently and in small group reading sessions. Teachers model then help students learn to guide group discussions using four strategies: clarifying, summarizing, questioning, generating, and predicting. The protocol allows for deep processing of text, note-taking, and opportunities to develop oral language skills. Professional development was provided by our Title One Professional Development Specialist between August 24th and November 3rd, 2016. This slide provides an example of monitoring of implementation, classroom observations with growth-producing feedback. After observation, teacher reflects on four areas. What did the students do well today? What was done to facilitate their success? Where can the students continue to grow and improve? And what can be done to facilitate their growth? The administrator, in reflective collaboration with the teacher, provides descriptive feedback. This slide provides a lesson artifact, student sample work showing change in growth due to this literacy practice. The student independently read an article about iPad use at school and responded by clarifying, summarizing, generating questions, and predicting. The student processed the text, made sense of the text, and gained a deeper understanding through reading comprehension. Reciprocal teaching also facilitates small group discussion, promotes higher level questioning, and builds rigor and critical thinking. Mr. Patterson, Fred Lynn's IBMYP Coordinator, will provide an update on our third essential
Evening, Chairman Sawyers, Vice Chairman Jessie, members of the board, and Dr. Walts. This slide outlines our third essential action. It's my distinct privilege to report that Fred Lynn has received formal authorization as an IBMYP school for the school year of 2008, 2017, 2018.
We continue implementing quality instruction in support of student achievement for all students. We look forward to submitting our final update to the board on June 21st. If I may take a moment, I would like to share some recent special events that took place at Fred Lynn, and we have some, some trophies. And the first one on the right is the Battle of the Brains, so we have a competition among the four IBMYP schools in Prince William County, and Fred Lynn, for the second year in a row, Thank you, Ms. Williams. So we had a recent competition from performing arts, and we won, Fred Lynn was, received the third place award for band. We received the second place for orchestra. At the end. First place for chorus. And overall, for the event at Busch Gardens, Fred Lynn were declared the champions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? Ms. Williams always, always has a comment, I love it.
Of course.
How about it?
So, Ms. Williams would like to congratulate Fred Lynn from the bottom of my heart, because I would like the public to know that you come and you present this implemented plan of corrective action to be an accredited school, and for a school that is not accredited, I cannot tell that you are not working your hardest, from a staff perspective, from student perspective. You've won Battle of the Brains, all of these musical talents, now IB program, I mean, outstanding. all of these musical talents, now IB program, I mean, outstanding, and I just wish you the deepest congratulations that I could possibly even think to muster for all of your hard work, because it is well-earned and well-deserved. And for those who don't know, Fred Lynn also has a program where you feed students, where you have Saturday school, where you say after-school, I mean, the list is endless on your hard work and dedication. So I would like to continue the praise, and thank you again. Thank you, Principal Nevis. Thank you, Mr. Patterson, and thank you, Mr. Bixby, and all of the rest of the Fred Lynn staff and team. Thank you very much.
Ms. Jesse.
Well, I also want to be a cheerleader. I think it's appropriate that you actually have cake over here. You see the artwork? So the celebration with the cake, I should have been over there just to be the person to highlight that, but you know that I work next door to you and that many of the students from Aquaquan Elementary will be going to Fred Lynn, and I've always admired the work, the hard work that you're doing. I also admire you because I'm told the first night that you came, when all the entire staff came, and I think that's very challenging for a staff, a school that's not accredited, to be placed in a public arena such as a school board and be televised, and yet you came with your logos and your uniforms, and I just admire the hard work that you put in, and I just admire the professional way that you have approached this requirement by the, I guess, VDOE, I'm not sure I agree with what they have, in terms of what they consider to be an accountability measure, but just the professional way you have done this. We'll see what the end is going to be, but as I look at what you're doing, you're on the road to excellence. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you very much. Moving on to item seventeen point zero two. Say Hart? We get Ms. Hart on this one? Love it. Now, you don't get to come up that often. It's wonderful. Safe Schools Advisory Council, any report? Ms. Hart, the podium is yours.
Good evening Chairman Sawyers, members of the school board, and Dr. Walts. As a result of your collective vision for school safety, the Safe Schools Advisory Council consists of a committed and caring group of Prince William County school employees, community service leaders from the police department and the fire department, as well as others. Thank you for appointing Prince William's finest. Needless to say, we are excited about this year's efforts. Mrs. Wendy Dempsey, our dedicated and dependable chairman, is eager to share the Safe Schools Advisory Council's accomplishments for school year two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen. Mrs. Dempsey?
Yes, Ms. Hart. Good evening. How's everybody? Great? Wonderful? All right. Good evening Chairman Sawyers, school board members, Dr. Walts. I'm Wendy Dempsey, as Ms. Hart mentioned. I'm the chairman for Safe Schools Advisory Council, and I'm honored to provide an update about Safe Schools Advisory Council. My little trusty clicker here. Okay, several years ago, Dr. Walts recognized a need for the council to focus on safety, on school safety. Thus, the Safe Schools Advisory Council was created to support safety and security of students, staff, and schools. Safe School Advisory Council meets every second Monday of every month during the school year at the Kelly Leadership Building. Throughout this school year, we investigated the topic of suicide awareness with our schools as well as our community organizations. Safe Schools Advisory Council, Ms. Hart is our facilitator, cannot thank her enough. We have a very diverse council. If I can have everyone stand up for a moment? Thank you. This is the council that I have backing me. Okay, we have a very diverse council. Sorry, that's hitting me on my forehead. Let me adjust that for a second. Well, we have our appointed board members from, and we have school principals from elementary, middle, and high school level. We have community service such as police officers and fire, we have student services, risk management, two school board members, and most recently, we have a nurse. With this diverse membership, it allows the Safe Schools Advisory Council to thrive on several perspectives for school safety. This year, our culminating service was Parent Information Night on the topic of suicide awareness. This event was well-attended and well-received. Our supervisors of school counselors partnered with Community Service Board to provide pertinent information and resource about suicide. Suicide is the third-leading cause of death among persons ten to fourteen, and the second among persons fifteen to thirty-four. A few risk factors that feed into that is history of mental health disorders, feeling of hopelessness, unwilling to seek help due to the stigma that is attached. Protective factors: coping skills, problem-solving, communication, relationship-building, and reduced access to lethal means. Prince William County supports in many ways. A few of the programs that we have is Second Step, Safe at Home, Safe Alone, which I've done at my local elementary school for the last four years, and Resolving Conflicts Creatively Program K through Six. Those are just a few. There's quite a, we offer a lot of programs. This was a very powerful activity that we did on our suicide night, suicide awareness night, forgive me. Who is on your Board of Directors? The Board of Directors activity is designed to define who influences you the most when making important life decisions, understanding why those who influence us may change over time. For parents, it's important for them to understand who influences your children, and if you're a part of that Board of Directors, understanding who the chairman of that Board of Directors is, meaning who is the biggest influence in the life decisions of your child. We hope that it is the student thus empowering them to take control of their own destiny. Based upon extensive discussion and census, the Safe Schools Advisory intends to focus on bullying prevention, which includes cyberbullying, and mental health resilience and coping for our school year of two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. Dr. Walts, Chairman Sawyers, school board members, thank you for your time, and Dr. Walts, thank you for your vision on Safe School Advisory Council. I've thoroughly enjoyed serving as chairman and just serving on the board as a member for the past few years. Thank you, everyone, and safe schools are everyone's business.
Ms. Satterwhite, since you're on the committee or the council, I'll throw it to you first, if you'd like.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I do appreciate that. I also want to thank Ms. Dempsey and Ms. Hart for your leadership. It's been a really dynamic group that we've had this year. The Parent Information Night and Suicide Awareness at Colgan High School was a huge success. There were a lot of things going on that night around the division, a lot of things at Colgan High School, and we had, I want to say, close to a hundred or just over a hundred people present, and it wasn't just adults either. We had students there. And, you know, I have to share with you guys, I've received an email this week, and Ms. Harvey, you'll be interested in this too, because your group was here last week. I received an email this week from a student who expressed to me, "I saw something from the last board meeting. I don't want my friends to do this. What can I do to help?" So we are making an impact in the division. We are reaching out to students. They are seeing what's happening, and then our parents are also becoming more aware, and I'm very excited that the Safe Schools Advisory Council has had a part in that. I look forward to seeing what we do next. Thank you to everybody who's given up your Monday nights and other nights for the event that we had. It takes a lot of time when we are involved in this. We're always prepping for the meetings. There's a lot of reading to do at different times, and then we're just investing in our lives into our kids, because it's something that I think every one of us in this council are very passionate about. So thank you so much for everything that you've done for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Satterwhite. Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, of course, would like to say thank you very much to Ms. Dempsey, who's my appointee. I've known you for a very long time, and I think you flourished beautifully in the position of chairman. You've done, demonstrated great leadership, and I appreciate your time and dedication that you've given over to the school division and all the work that you've done locally and within the district as well at, like, local elementary school. I think you have a good boots-on-the-ground perspective and a good cultural competency perspective that you bring to Safe Schools Committee, so I very much appreciate it, and I very much appreciate Ms. Hart and all of the work from everyone else on the Safe Schools Advisory Committee. It's a very large undertaking that you do for us here, and the programs that you've put on in the short time that I've been a board member have been nothing short of stellar. I mean, they're just absolutely amazing. I wasn't able to attend this program, but I look forward to fitting it in next year from a schedule. It's always wildly successful, and I still can remember all of the things that I was shocked about from the Internet Safety Program the year before. They still sit with me, so your programs have a long-lasting effect, and very much appreciate it, so I just want to say thank you again, and I hope that you'll continue to serve.
Thank you. We'll just go down the line. Ms. Jesse.
I also want to thank this committee and Ms. Hart, Mrs. Hart, for the work that you do. I know that there are several projects on here that, you know, as a principal, you know, we were talking about testing earlier and how important it is for students to be academically ready, but at the end of the day, parents want their kids to be safe, and so I don't take it lightly. You know, as a principal, I always said to them, "I don't know if they will forgive you for not teaching their child how to read. They may forgive you for that, but they will not forgive you if you don't keep their kids safe." It's something that when you send a child to school, you expect him to come back home, and the suicide prevention and all these things that we're talking about now are just so, very important, and I was not able to make the, your activity this year, but I definitely plan to make it the next year. Thank you very much for serving us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jesse. And Ms. Ralston, do you? Okay, Ms. Ralston.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Hart, where are you? Did you leave town? I called and came to one of the meetings, and it was as you were planning for the big event.
Yes.
And I sat there, and I thought, "Oh, my goodness, I'll be out of town." And I actually was slightly upset that I was going to miss this, because the interaction that that committee had, there was so much energy, positive, real positive energy. I hope that you continue on, Ms. Dempsey, and I know you will, Ms. Hart. Mental health is a dangerous thing, and I appreciate those kids that come from Forest Park to remind us of that, because sometimes we always forget. We see kids smiling and having a good time, and then there are those whose smile is really not there at all. It's a make-believe look, so please learn the difference, because they could be in your family. Thank you so much.
We thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ralston. Anyone else? Mr. Deutsch?
I'll be brief. I just want to thank the COLD rep, Clyde, for all of his work over the last year, and want to thank really all the staff and all the time put in by so many on this committee. Thank you all so much.
Same thing for me. I'd just like to thank everyone for their hard work, and especially Ms. Andrea Bailey for being on the committee as well. It's awesome. I don't want to speak for Mr. Brand, because that's not my job to do that, but I know that he really talks, he talks about this committee a lot. I was actually in the boardroom the day that he was appointed to this board when, before, well, last term, last time, in two thousand fifteen, and so I know that he likes this committee a lot, and has probably said that he has to miss your presentation today, but he's also very proud of the committee as well. So we very much appreciate not only the time that you put in, but the major impact that it has on our students, which is really why you do it to begin with, and so we thank you very much for your time and your efforts, and you should be congratulated. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Seventeen zero three, Student Housing. Do we not, do we don't have it? We're just, we're just, there's nothing else to present to us, correct? No update or anything like that? Just make sure we're on the same page? Okay. Lakewood, I just asked Ms. Jesse. This is your school, so Ms. Jesse?
It is my school, and it's also, Ms. Williams, Woodbridge Middle is also her school. I just wanted to make sure we were both included. First of all, I want to thank the committee for everything that they did, because there were so many options on the table, and they did a tremendous job. I think it's a challenge for us to try to balance enrollment of these two middle schools, and also considering all the boundary changes and Potomac Shores coming in. These are the things that that committee had to consider. You had split between communities. I know that West Ridge did not want their students split, and there were different points of view, and at one point, I just said to them, "Somebody's going to be unhappy." But we have to make a decision that's in the best interest of all of our kids. Also, as we look at the balancing of the demographics, Mr. Klein and his group, you guys did a tremendous job, and I really do have a motion really for us. I would like for us to consider, I move that Prince William County Schools approve Boundary Plan Five as presented by the Boundary Planning Committee to be effective two thousand eighteen, nineteen school year, and that rise in eighth graders in the two thousand eighteen, nineteen school year, and the affected areas be given the option to remain at Woodbridge Middle as long as they provide their own transportation.
Okay, Ms. Jesse, I'm going to read, a lot of that was pre-typed in here, and I'm going to read it as it was typed, and if you would like me to type it exactly as you read it, you can certainly have me do that, but I'm going to read it as is, and I think we hit all of your points. So let me read it, and if you don't like it, then we'll make it how you want it. That the Prince William County School Board approved Plan Five prepared by the Greater Lakewood Area Middle School Boundary Planning Committee, and permit rising eighth-grade students to remain at their currently-assigned schools if they provide their own transportation. Is that to your liking?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to second.
Yes. Ms. Williams, seconds? And discussion. Ms. Jesse, it's your motion.
I think much of what I had to say was said at the beginning. I remember Betty Covington telling me the worst thing that could happen to me was to be in a boundary situation, and I have this feeling that we're, I'm going to be in several, but I do have to say that the voices were heard, and Mr. Beavers and his staff, the way they took information back and just listened to people and brought back different ideas, I think we were up to, I'm not sure, I think we were up to like six different options? I'm not sure, but to weave it down, to get down to three options, and for me, the main thing was I did not want students who currently resided at Lakewood Middle be moved out of that school so that a new set of students would be brought in, and somehow they were able to do that in this plan. So I just want to thank the committee, and also to thank Mr. Klein's staff for the professional job that they did.
Thank you, Ms. Jesse. Ms. Williams.
I, again, would like to thank the Boundary Planning Committee for all of the hard work that they put in, as well as Mr. Beavers and everyone else in the planning department. That is a job that I thoroughly respect, and I'm thankful every day to Jesus that I do not have. I don't know how you guys work the magic that you do. It's absolutely amazing. You have the patience of saints. You listen to people from all walks of the earth who come to make public comments in various forums, and it's very much appreciated by me. I will say to the public involved in this boundary process, we did listen to you. I chose to back Plan Five simply because of the longer term. I'm looking at it from a long-term perspective, and some of the plans look better on a short term, the idea being that we could have diversification and population needs met without exceeding them at Lakewood. We don't have land and space to put another middle school over there, and I think that Plan Five best supports our future goals as a school system and our future options for best housing our students, so that's why I went with Plan Five. I know it doesn't make everyone happy, and unfortunately, that's just something that occurs with boundaries. I will say, as someone who went to elementary school with one set of kids and middle school with another, and then saw some of them again in high school, and some of them I never saw again, it does get uncomfortable as a student, but there is the opportunity for new friends and new relationships, which only builds better character. I know that's exactly not what you want to hear if you're in that situation, but we do have specialty programs and things of that nature, so you never know who you're going to end up with or what school you're going to end up at, so there's always a bright side to that cloud, and just would encourage parents to look at that as an option as well, depending on what your student chooses to do with their middle school career, and then again, in their high school career. And I would like for the school system, I know in our policy that we speak a lot to geographic progression, but I think maybe it's time to relook at some of, something that, or that definition in itself, because of the way of our school system is designed and the way our accounting planning went. I'm not sure that it's always a realistic option, and of course, not at this time, but I think that's something that we should, as a board, maybe should consider at a future date. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Anyone else? I always try to give Ms. Satterwhite time to write her notes, make sure she can throw her hand up at the last minute. All right, we'll call the vote then. Those in favor of this motion, please signify, I'm sorry, let me reread the motion. That the Prince William County School Board approved Plan Five prepared by the Great, Greater Lakewood Area Middle School Boundary Planning Committee, and permit rising eighth grade students to remain at their currently assigned schools if they provide their own transportation. Those in favor of that motion, please signify yes by raising your right hand. Thank you, that looks like everyone. Except for Mr. Wilk and Mr. Brand. And save.
The vote is six yes, two absent, motion passed.
All right, moving on to item seventeen point zero four, elementary school best practices, Minneville Elementary School. Mr. Erickson, we're getting a wide range of associates today, we're getting a little bit everybody, a little bit everybody. Mr. Erickson?
Thank you. Chairman Sawyers, members of the school board, and Dr. Walts, Minneville Elementary, a very high performing Title One school. Under the leadership of Mr. Nathaniel Provencio, the Washington Post 2017 Principal of the Year is a nationally recognized professional learning community. As part of our commitment to sharing best practices in our division, this evening, Mr. Provencio, Assistant Principal Deborah Ellis, and a team of teacher leaders will be sharing their journey to success as a true professional learning community. The processes Mr. Provencio and his team have established have resulted in a model that has spurred other schools from PWCS and beyond to follow suit, and has resulted in recognition as, at the state and national levels. At this time, it is my pleasure to introduce Mr. Nathaniel Provencio, the outstanding principal of Minneville Elementary.
Thank you, thank you. Dr. Walts, Chairman Sawyers, and members of the board, thank you very much for allowing us the opportunity to share our vision and mission with you tonight. Since 1972, Minneville Elementary has served the students of families and families of the Dell City community in Woodbridge. We are a proud Title One school of approximately 500 students. Seventy-five percent of our student population is considered economically disadvantaged, and over 50% of our students are second language learners, and in addition, we have an approximate 20% transancy or mobility rate. In spite of some of these challenges, the staff, students, and community of Minneville have worked to cultivate a culture of excellence by putting best instructional practices in place, making collaboration a priority, and believing in the strengths and gifts of our diverse community. As you can see on the slide in front of you, Minneville statewide rankings have increased each year. We are a Prince William County School of Excellence. We've been awarded the 2015 Virginia Distinguished Title One School Recognition. We have received three multiple business partnerships of the year, including tonight. We've received the Prince William County Schools TIPA Award for all four years of the program's existence, and we are recognized as a national model professional learning community. Tonight, some of our outstanding team members are going to share some of our most vital instructional and cultural aspects in our journey as a professional learning community.
The building blocks of any successful professional learning community are its mission and vision. Minneville, these building blocks define and guide the work that we do every day. We expect our students to soar for excellence, and to achieve this mission, we have agreed that as a collaborative team, we will give 100% effort every day to create opportunities that will promote student engagement and inspire a love for learning. We will strive to help students surpass academic expectations while celebrating individual student growth. We will build relationships with all of our students and families in an effort to help students soar for excellence. You may see mere words on the screen, but the words commitment, collaboration, and community guide the work we do at Minneville. And through the next part of our presentation, we will demonstrate how commitment, collaboration, and community come alive through Minneville's professional learning community.
Good evening. My name is Star Granby, and I teach first grade at Minneville. And as a professional learning community, our staff is committed to implementing effective instructional practices in order to meet the needs of our diverse learners. One example of that is our Preston Language Arts Framework. Under this framework, we maximize student engagement by having our highly trained instructional staff push into the classroom to provide small group instruction rather than pulling them out for interventions. This commitment allows us to co-plan, co-teach, and collaborate to meet the diverse needs of our students. We're committed to learning from each other and providing quality instruction to ensure that all of our students are successful.
Good evening. My name is Ally Weisberg, and I teach first grade at Minneville Elementary.
Good evening. My name is Batima Mohammed, and I teach second grade at Minneville Elementary.
As a professional learning community, our staff is committed to actively collaborating in all areas to ensure a collective approach is taken to meet the needs of our students and school community. The most important aspect of our professional learning community is that no teacher or staff member works in isolation. Our collaboration begins with shared knowledge of standards. As a professional learning community, we look at grade level SOL standards and objectives, and unpack the strands of each. As a team, we then discuss what it is we want our students to be able to do and understand throughout and by the end of each unit. The next piece of our collaborative efforts involves each team creating and refining formative assessments. Informal assessments to be used throughout a unit, like quick checks, are also created and refined to meet the needs of our students.
Next, we have the collaborative sharing of lessons, strategies, and resources. During this piece of our professional learning community cycle, we seek out and share instructional strategies, activities, and resources. Some of these include the incorporation of technology, multicultural connections, and strategies to meet the needs of our special ed, gifted, and English language learners. Through this collaboration, no member of the team is working in isolation. Then we have the data-based monitoring of instruction. Throughout the PLC process, data is collected and monitored of each learning experience. As a team, we monitor and discuss our data through mid-unit reflections. Here, we assess what is working and how we can augment instruction if necessary. Then, end of unit assessment data is collected, analyzed, and discussed to help teams determine next steps in intervention and extension. Finally, we have the delivery of interventions, extension activities, and lesson refinement. Based on data collected, we as teams make decisions for further instruction. Our professional learning communities discuss which students need remediation or intervention, which students will benefit from extension activities, and how lessons can be refined in the future to ensure every student achieves mastery of the content. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ashley Hoyle, and I'm a third grade teacher at Minneville Elementary. As a professional learning community, our staff focuses on creating a school culture that welcomes and honors the strengths, gifts, talents, and contributions of the entire school community. Our family engagement team is, is a diverse representation throughout the school to dig deeper on finding ways to bring the community inside the building. Using the text Beyond the Bake Sale, we also identify fresh ideas on how to develop stronger partnerships outside of the building. Each year, Minneville has a goal to increase our volunteer hours. Just five years ago, our goal was only 500 hours. We have increased that goal each year by anywhere between 500 and 1,000 hours, and this year's goal of 4,500 hours, we're well on our way. This year, Minneville was also proud to be recognized with Prince William County's Community Partnership of the Year Award with our Prince William County Police Department. Each month, local police officers would join Minneville's PE Club, playing sports with students, as well as, as well as working with individual students in the classroom on their own academic goals. We have a successful school advisory council with the assistance of dedicated parents. Through this effort, our community helps the leadership of Minneville review plans, budgets, and helps to deliver feedback from the community. Thank you.
We have a great team, excellent team. Once again, thank you for the opportunity to share our school journey with you tonight. As a professional learning community, we know that success is always a team effort. Our accomplishments as a school is a testament to our world-class school division, and the support we receive from Dr. Walts, our school board member, Ms. Ralston, Mr. Erickson, our associate superintendent, and the entire Prince William County School community.
Ms. Ralston, since this is your school, I'll throw it to you first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, Minneville, it is so good to see you stand here and talk about all the good things that's going on there. You know that over time, and I tell you all the time, I need to have good news, and you, you always, you come through when I can't think of another good thing to say, and you come through every time. I do miss not being there, you know, and I know you miss me not being there. It's okay. But I do want to say that this is the kind of schools that I wish where I came from had. Don't, just because it's a big state, and of course, we, you know, we thought we were everything, but we weren't this. So when I think about what we're doing in, in Dell City, you know, it's amazing, because so many realtors and others were saying horrible things about us, that we couldn't educate, and our kids weren't learning. And that same year, you just, you hit it out of the park. So I thank you so very much for that, for what you do for our children, what you do for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Jessie?
I just want to thank you for allowing others to see that students from all backgrounds, regardless of race, regardless of their income level, where they come from, and I noticed that you had a 20% transancy. I, I had that advantage, drove me crazy. You know, as soon as they get there, they leave. And sometimes, the ones that you think are really going to pass the test, leave before the test is taken. And you always love that. Or you had kids coming at the very, very last minute, and you, they were coming and going all the time. It is just not easy. I remember saying to a friend of mine, who was a principal in this county, that it's one of those really tough schools like your school, and several of her teachers who had been there for 15 or 20 years decided they were going to leave. And I said, why are they leaving? And she said, Lily, it's just so tiresome. It's good work. It's just wonderful work. But I know how daunting it is, and I know how challenging it is, but there's absolutely nothing like seeing kids learn who are not supposed to learn. Nothing like it, because they look to you, and I'm looking at the photos and everything you have created. PLC is a culture. It's not, it's not a test. It's not a kit. It's a culture of high expectations. Thank you very much for sharing what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jessie. Anyone else? Thank you very much. Moving right along to the 1800s here, 1801 revision to the 2017-18 Code of Behavior. On for information, Ms. Goss?
Ms. Custer?
It says Goss. I'm just reading the screen, that's all. Ms. Custer?
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Chairman Sawyers, members of the school board, and Dr. Walts. Unfortunately, Ms. Goss is ill and unable to be with us this evening. I am excited about the opportunity to present the recommended revisions to the 2017-18 Code of Behavior for your consideration. Presenting with me this evening is Dr. Renee Lacy, Director of Office of Student Management and Alternative Programs. Dr. Lacy and I have worked collaboratively on these revisions. The Code of Behavior revisions committee is composed of administrators and teachers at all levels, central office staff, counselors, parents, students, and Prince William County Division Council. This year, we had a representative also from the Office of Risk Management. The task of the revisions committee is to review the suggested revisions and their justifications to ensure that they meet our expectations for a safe, nurturing, and positive learning environment for staff and students. A list of Code of Behavior revision committee members is included in your electronic Code of Behavior information. These revisions were also reviewed and approved by the superintendent's staff and by Division Council. This year's Code of Behavior revisions support our efforts to provide a positive culture and climate, which aligns with the Prince William County Schools' strategic plan. Revisions address issues involving student attendance and excuses as outlined in Regulation 724-1, Attendance and Excuses, and Policy 724, Student Absences, Excuses, and Tardies. This revision provides clarity for school, staff, parents, and students. Additionally, it involves minor revisions which clarify videotaping, recording, or photographing on the school bus. The revision ensures a clear understanding of school bus safety.
Good evening again, Chairman Sawyers, members of the school board, and Dr. Walts. This year, minor revisions were made to the Code of Behavior to ensure alignment with the language in the Code of Virginia. I'd also like to point out that during this year's legislative session, the House and the Senate proposed companion bills regarding student discipline. If those bills had passed, they would have resulted in tremendous impact to the Code of Behavior. However, at the close of the session on February 24th, those bills were defeated. Additionally, regarding student discipline, we have been working with Ms. McGowan to update the student discipline regulations. As a result, there are minor editorial changes that will be made if those changes are approved by the school board. Ms. Custer?
In keeping with the intentionality of building the 40 developmental assets in our youth, the opportunity to empower youth to have a voice in the Code of Behavior revisions grants ownership of the boundaries and expectations set, which support a safe and a caring school environment. At this time, I am pleased to introduce Ricky Morales, a junior from Brentsville District High School, and member of the Healthy Communities Healthy Youth Students Learning Essential Assets of Development Asset, of Development Team, otherwise known as HCHY Students Lead Team. Ricky?
Good evening, Chairman Sawyer, school board members, and Dr. Walts. The HCHY Students Lead Team meant to discuss the revisions necessary for compliance with regulations set forth by the Commonwealth of Virginia and Prince William County Schools. Of particular interest this year was the notion of the use of cell phone video recording on the bus. After much discussion, the decision to include Division Council's regarding wording was recommended. I also represented the team on the Code of Behavior revisions leadership team. Meeting with the school and central office administrators, along with parents, gave me insight to the process and detail that goes into providing an equitable, but safe and caring school environment. It is through opportunities such as this, youth feel empowered and valued as a resource in the community. Thank you for allowing the youth voice to be represented in the Code of Behavior decision.
Thank you, Ricky. We also have with us Naomi Harvey, a freshman from Forest Park High School, who will be joining us on the team as well. Naomi?
Good evening, Chairman Sawyers, school board members, and Dr. Walts. As an eighth grader at Port Trishna School, I had the role of Stephanie in the middle school Code of Behavior video. Working with our staff, scripts were written, props gathered, and a draft storyboard designed. This learning opportunity made us really emphasize the importance and gain a better understanding of the Code of Behavior. Although I am now a freshman, I have heard from friends still in middle school that watching the Code of Behavior videos was just the visual supplement needed to more clearly understand the Code of Behavior. Viewing the high school videos gave me the clarity to violations commonly found in a high school setting. Starring as Stephanie has given me the confidence in the Starring as Stephanie has given me the confidence and the chance to co- emcee at the annual Student Leadership Conference this past March. I look forward to joining the HCHY Students Lead Team and hoping for many more opportunities to develop my speaking skills, as well as build assets for myself and others. Thank you for your belief in youth and providing a safe and caring environment for learning here in Prince William County Schools. Thank you.
Thank you to Ricky and to Naomi for sharing information with us, because we truly value the voice of our youth. I would also like to thank Mrs. Debbie Bishop for the many hours she spends with our HCHY students, ensuring that their voice is heard through empowerment, engagement, and strong school and community connections. Thank you, Ms. Bishop. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the board? No? Thank you very much.
All right, our next, our next item, excuse me, is 19.01, Holding One or More Board Meetings in Schools. Mr. Iman.
Good evening, Chairman Sawyers, Vice Chairman Jessie, School Board members, and Dr. Walts. At the chairman's request, I'm presenting three options tonight that would replicate what viewers are used to seeing when board meetings are broadcast live from the Kelly Leadership Center. In this instance, if they were then to be broadcast instead remotely from schools. And I apologize if I sniffle a little bit. My allergies have got the better of me today. Some of the considerations that will be presenting, or that I'll be presenting this evening, deal with the possible video and broadcast quality, some equipment and other broadcasting costs, staffing-related issues, how, what school sites might be recommended for selection, and some other associated issues in terms of logistics. And please note, as I said, there are costs or estimates at this point in time. So, on the first option, it would allow us to air the board meeting on our TV channel and webcast it live on PWCSTV.com. Essentially, this would replicate what we are able to do in this facility. The primary piece of equipment in this option is a fiber optic transmitter, which will remotely send the transmission signal. And you can see the estimates related to Option 1. In Option 2, it does not include the fiber optic transmitter. Instead, we would stream our board meetings live via Facebook and on our PWCS stream. In other words, there would not be live TV broadcast. This does reduce the cost, because the transmitter is not needed. But there are still associated costs that are continuing through this option as well. In Option 3, this looks at it completely differently, in that it eliminates the purchasing of things needed to stream our show on our TV channel. Instead, we would hire a third party to do all of the production work for us. But this option still would require oversight on some of my staff members, and it would still require us to bring certain pieces of equipment, like the laptops for you to conduct business and so forth. So some of the associated costs are still there. But it does essentially replicate what we're able to do here, using the third-party broadcaster. Some other factors that would need to be looked at, in terms of arrangements to actually set up a dais of sorts, if you will, and the associated furniture and so forth that would be available, perhaps in the school, perhaps not. A change in food services associated with the dinner beforehand. And then, a number of unexpected things that we may not encounter, we may not know until we actually conduct such a meeting. When this topic came forward initially as a discussion point, it was also mentioned that we should look at bus transportation related to school selection sites. I did a little research regarding bus routes and schedules, and in general, from my 10,000-foot view, let me tell you, as I looked at these, they show several options within sections of the county. However, there is really only one cross-county connector route and schedule that connects Manassas to Woodbridge, but Gainesville not so well. And even the one connector route looks to have bus pickup and drop-off points only near new directions in Stonewall and Manassas, and Garfield and Woodbridge. And there really are no late runs on those buses to match up well with the end times of our board meetings, even when we do end earlier. There's also some other considerations that are here. For instance, the school that's selected, are there activities and schedules that cannot be changed? The room that would be used would have to be offline the afternoon before, so we could set up the day of the board meeting then, so that it is set up, and depending on how late we end, if we can't dismantle that evening, sometime into the next morning. We would also, in looking at school sites, we would want to look at their internal infrastructure. Is it a school that's already been upgraded with the wireless upgrade? Not all of our schools unfortunately have been yet. As you know, in our Technology Improvement Plan, as part of the CIP, that's a phased-in, multi-year project to bring all those schools up to speed. Fortunately, due to the funding in the FY18 budget, at the recommendation of the superintendent, the approval of the School Board, and much appreciated, we are bringing forward the improved bandwidth overall. So I would suggest that if this is a decision the board makes, that we delay doing it until that bandwidth upgrade is there, because that will help us ensure that we can do the broadcasting at the required speeds. And that leads us to a possible board decision. And that's where I will leave you with my information tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Iman. Ms. Ralston, I know you've brought this up, and I have. I'd be happy to throw it to you for the, for the first comments, if you'd like. Ms. Ralston?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, at least we've got this on here, and we're looking at it. Number 3.
Mm-hmm.
Let's see, where is it? Oh, there it is. That looks a lot better with the cost. And if we use, and if we use our schools, our high schools, for the meetings.
Yes.
They have some technology for you to set up already there.
Correct. Those, the high schools were some of the first schools that we upgraded that infrastructure. And so if they're still experiencing problems, it's typically because of the bandwidth side of the house. But again, we're moving forward as fast as we can with the new fiscal year to correct for that.
And I thank you for that, too. So, I would suggest that Option 3. I like the whole idea, because it brings other community people who don't come all the way out here, to be a participant in the schools, you know, by coming to the meeting. A lot of people don't remember, they may have everything they need to watch us, but, "Oh, was it on?" You know? "When does it come on again?" Well, okay, I don't know either. So, I think that this, this is good. Where are we? If we were to go with it, what, what else is needed? Do you know?
Well, in, in that case, as you notice, and I have Option 3 on the screen right now, in terms of the FY18 budget.
It is unbudgeted.
The cost, the unbudgeted per remote school-based board meeting cost. So we would have to fund that, as well as any of the associated costs for overtime and so forth, those kinds of issues. So, yes, the cost is reduced significantly.
Yeah.
But there's still some unfunded.
With everything. With everything. Thank you very much for just carrying this through. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Ralston. I don't know if I'm going to have any questions for you, but just a few comments. This is something that I had talked about, I think, right after we were all elected, I believe, and I believe a local journalist wrote a piece about it, Inside Nova, I believe, Mr. Alborn. And, and I know Diane has brought this up in the past, and so we've been trying to find the right, give you proper amount of time to put a presentation together, do your research, and also, you know, have a conversation. I obviously don't think the board's ready to move on. I know it's on for action information, which I didn't catch. I probably would've said, "Just put it on as information." But, you know, ultimately, I think what the board has to weigh is, we knew this wasn't going to be free, all right? Nothing is free, of course, right? And so we basically have to weigh the, obviously, the pros and cons, a cost-benefit analysis here. And we have to say that, we have to basically say, you know, how, how much is it worth to see new faces at board meetings? How much is it, you know, to get different community members involved? I'm talking to the board here, and things that we had maybe consider over the next couple of weeks, or whenever we want to consider this again, if we want to consider it again. I personally am for the idea, and it's nice to have some options in front of me. And one of my first instincts, I think, is along the same lines of Ms. Ralston, is, you know, maybe we'd consider just doing one or two next year, just to give it a shot and pay for those separately and not invest in the, and again, there's, I know the pros and cons of investing in the equipment right away and not investing, and maybe that's an option as well. But, you know, I, I laugh, and I'm sure Ms. Satterwhite would laugh along with me, when Mr. Wilk said to me one time that he has to come out west to a board meeting. I chuckled. I was like, you know, you certainly don't get to say that when you don't cross hoadly, going the wrong way. So, he's never made the drive from Bull Run Mountain or Cat Harpen to, to a board meeting, that's for sure. He's not here to defend himself, so that's not completely fair. But it's, but I joke, because it's not really about board involvement, but I do think that's worth consideration. When we talk about it, we have, we have board members who slug in and out of DC, as again, as Mr. Wilk has said several times. I think, you know, people, traffic in, in the area is obviously notoriously not super reliable, or maybe it is reliable, just in the bad way. And so those things should be considered as well. But in my view, it is important to maybe see new faces if we had a meeting at Battlefield, and then, you know, a meeting at Woodbridge, or a meeting at Freedom, you know, to just different parts of the community. I think there's a value to that. Obviously, as a board, we have to consider what we're willing to pay, if anything, to do that. That's certainly the cost-benefit analysis that we have to do. But I think, not only do we see new faces and new people involved, but I think the, one of the, one of the big pros for me is, is we get an opportunity to showcase that school, you know, in some way, shape, or form. And we do have to ask ourselves, what inconvenience is worthwhile for that school, for that one Wednesday, to say, you know, how much inconvenience are we willing to say a school has to put up with to have a board meeting once, you know, in a blue moon? And obviously, that, that school wouldn't come around again very quickly, you know, so they probably wouldn't see it again for, for a long, long time. So, I just think those are, those are the ideas. I really like this idea. Ms. Ralston has brought it up more recently than I do. I really like the idea. I get there's some logistical issues that we need to concern ourselves with, but I truly do appreciate, I know this is kind of, we've taught, you and I have talked about this several times over months and months and months, just about where the proper place to put it, and prioritizing in your day, because you do have other things to do as well, of course. But I do think this is an interesting idea, and, you know, I'm looking forward to kind of talking through this with other board members who may be interested in it, and if we're not, we're not, and I appreciate that, too. But I'm all for getting new faces, getting more people involved in communities that aren't necessarily involved, or even if the community's involved, just people who, who wouldn't normally come to a board meeting. It gives them a chance to come to a board meeting and do their thing, and we can kind of take the show on the road, so to speak. Maybe we can charge admission. We didn't factor that in. You didn't figure net gain on here.
I didn't do that.
You've got to do the other side of the ledger here, Mr. Iman. We might be able, we might be able to charge ticket prices, so. But that's another factor as well. But I do thank you very much for your presentation. Thank you.
All right. And Mr. Sawyer, I'll look for your guidance as to whether to put it back on.
Oh, sure. Ms. Jessie and I will talk, and other board members, too, if there's, and I'll just generally get engaged from other board members, if there's an interest. I mean, we won't want to put it back on if it's not necessarily something we want to do, but, but, you know, I think it's, I think it's worthwhile at least to have the conversation, and we can determine if it, if it comes back on or not. Thank you for that. Ms. Jessie?
You know, when, when we decide we're going to do something in a school, and we make a decision at this level that we're going to move a board meeting into a school, I'm wondering if we should not talk to that school and see what they think about that, because a board meeting in a school, I think the idea, the concept is novel, really, and I, I, but I'm just one, has any other school board done this before? And did it generate the type of community participation that we wish to receive? Or would it just be another location, and people would be confused that they've always had the board meetings in the board meeting room? So I, I think that we need to do a little bit more research. I'm also concerned about budget considerations. The, you know, there are some personnel issues that I'm looking at right now, but I just have a lot of questions about it. But I think the concept of being more available and moving it to different locations is something to give thought to. But I just need to give a, a great deal of thought to it, because it impacts so many people, and, you know, the night before you have to set this up, and it's, you know, the technical aspects of it and the cost of it. I just think we need to kind of think it through, but thank you very, very much, and as usual, you're very thorough.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jessie. Anyone else? Ms. Satterwhite?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It was interesting, reading through this and reading through the costs, and I'll echo Ms. Jessie, too. Your questions, Ms. Jessie, were excellent. Very good comments, very thoughtful. I really appreciate that. I'm concerned, too, about the unbudgeted amounts, and I do look forward to hearing from my constituents and what their thoughts are. I mean, Gainesville District, most of us in Gainesville District are the farthest away from KLC. And so I do look forward to hearing from my constituents to see what their thoughts are. And, Ms. Jessie, your comments about the building and talking to the, the staff in the buildings, and that's a good comment, because, for example, Battlefield's incredibly overcrowded, and who knows at what given day that the auditorium is going to be used as a classroom. And so, that's, that's a consideration, and I know the building's always very busy. So it's something to, it's something to think about. And the other thing, too, is, you know, I know we, we want to make sure that our broadcast continues in, in a way that our viewers are used to, because we do have a lot of people who watch us live on PWCSTV, or on cable. A lot of people watch the rebroadcast, but a lot of people watch us live. We have staff members, parents, and I'll be in the grocery store, and somebody I don't know will say, "I watched the meeting." I'm like, "Oh, okay, thank you." So it happens a lot, and that's for people who can't get here. They can watch at their convenience, they can watch it at night, the joke is, with a bowl of popcorn. And, but they can. And so I appreciate that we offer that, and that opens up the attendance at our meetings, so to speak, to a lot of people. The other thing, too, that someone pointed out to me when they saw this in the agenda, is that one of the reasons this building was built was to give us a meeting space that we could open up and add more space for more people, and, and have the technology, which we just refreshed. And we've, we have the access to be able to find anything we want on the internet during a meeting, if we need to pull it up. And I know at some of the schools, yes, as you said, Mr. Iman, we still have some problems. And you are addressing it, but that is an issue.
We're working them, yes.
Exactly. You're addressing it, but it is still an issue. And as you said, it would be hard to do that immediately at some schools. And so, you know, we do have to think about that. Everything is well set up right now for anybody who comes here also to watch us, and so that's a concern also. Everything operates very smoothly here. And so that, we, you brought up good, but good points that you brought up to us, and I appreciate the thought you put into the presentation. And, Ms. Jessie, like I said again, thank you for the comments that you made. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Satterwhite. Anyone else? Mr. Deutch.
Yeah, I share a lot of similar concerns, I guess. The idea of moving meetings for, for increased attendance is always an interesting concept when you're trying to get more people, and what do you do and what works? And there's a, there's a balance, both of consistency of meetings, and just getting that in people's schedule, and then moving things to have things closer to people. And when I think, though, of like, who comes to meetings, it's not like a high density of people who live close by this building, you know, when I look at it. Usually, people who show up are the people who have an issue that they really care about. And so I, like, I haven't noticed much in terms of geography impact, you know, driving attendance. Maybe there's a discussion of geography making it more challenging for some people to come. On that front, though, the question becomes, if you move it anywhere too far from about here, it does make it harder for one side of the county or the other to show up. So that only increases that impact. I mean, if we were to move it to, you know, Patriot or Battlefield, or Garfield, or Woodbridge, or Forest Park, you know, for some people, it's almost an hour drive at that point, or more. And that, that becomes even more challenging. So, just the logistical challenges, I mean, we do a really good job showcasing a lot of our schools with the events we rotate around, and some of the division-wide events, so, you know, we're definitely doing that. And, I don't know, the thought from you of having a room offline at a school for almost three days is, that's a huge inconvenience, even if it's two and a half days, or, that's a solid inconvenience. So, I don't know, I just, I don't see what the, what the need is for this. Anyway. And, I mean, even if we get down to 50 Anyway, and, I mean, even if we get down to 15 grand plus 140 per meeting, plus unintentional, you know, ancillaries, maybe we're talking 17, 5, 20 grand per meeting, there's people in this room who kind of spend 20 grand for something where we've already got, you know, we already have a space that functions, and everybody knows where to sit, et cetera, you know, the audio works, everything generally works. So, I mean, that 20 grand adds up. I mean, we could do some re refurbishes, more equipment, there's all kinds of things we could do. Heck, we could speed up the tech, the wireless improvement with that 20 grand, depending on how many we're doing. I guess, the one other thing is, we, we think this through, if we were to ever go to it, it would be nice to have a schedule of where the meetings are taking place established at the front end of the year if this were ever to happen. That way, there isn't some sort of concern or discussion of, are we moving a meeting somewhere because of a certain agenda item, et cetera? And then, the other thought is, I had one more, I forget. Anyway, those are a few thoughts. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Deutsch. Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Iman, for your presentation. I think that this is a, a good idea on several levels, and in terms of equity, like I have said and been quoted in the past, there's, there is no bus stop here, so if you don't drive, or you don't have a friend who drives, or you don't have gas money to put in your car to get here, if you do drive, you're not coming. And that is relative when it comes to citizen comment time, or the public really being actually able to physically be present to weigh in on the, on whatever the issue is. And that's a matter of equity for our constituent base. It's not a matter of, you know, whether you live on one end of the county or not, it's just a matter of, can you really get here? I like the idea also, because, you know, I think it does give us all an opportunity to see the inside of different buildings, and to see what our high schools look like. I'm opposed to the idea in the sense that I feel like when this issue was brought up, we kind of looked at it as either we do it or we don't, and the cost involved. I think that, you know, if we do, we were to undertake something like this in the future, I don't, I'm not quite sure why we would have to go through the necessity of setting up an actual, like, mock board room to hold our meetings. I mean, there's plenty of boards across the country that use fold-out tables, I mean, God forbid, but, you know, if we were, as a cost-saving measure, I know it's not as formal or as nice as this room here and what it's designed to do, and I wouldn't advocate for holding all of our board meetings at high schools or things of that nature, but I, I kind of like the idea, only because we're doing something similar with the Joint CIP Committee, in that we are touring around the county and giving people an opportunity who come to those meetings to see the inside of our different buildings and, and different parts of the county. So, I wouldn't advocate for doing this on a regular basis, maybe once or twice a year, but also, and only in addition when our technology has improved to make it more affordable for us as a school division, because we are growing leaps and bounds every year, you know, it seems like a lot of money to be spent when we're getting students, and we could use that money to better assist our student or staff population. I think we're almost there technologically. I mean, most of us have, you know, smartphones and things of that nature, and a few of us have learned how to Skype and Tweet and things of that nature, so, you know, this might be something interesting for the board to consider, maybe on a flip side, since we're adding a student board member in upcoming next year, you know, what if this was something that maybe our own students from TV production decided to take on a project and invited the board to come host a meeting at their school, or something of that nature? I mean, I think that there's multiple ways to tackle this, and it's worth further discussion, and I just wanted to throw out a couple of outside-of-the-box ideas and creative ways that maybe if we're really, truly interested in interacting with our constituent base, we could find some other creative ways to do that, and we not have such a formal setting when we do, if we do undertake that. So, I just agree with the chairman, I think that, and this is something that we should consider and think about. I'm just concerned about the cost as well. Thank you.
Have everybody had a crack, so, thank you very much.
All right, you're quite welcome. I'm not leaving.
You're not going anywhere. Good to hang out. 1902, new policy 103.1, school board request to the superintendent. It's the first reading, Mr. Iman.
All right, well, good evening to you all once again. As you recall, Dr. Walts wrapped up his comments at the last board meeting by proposing a new way to address certain board member requests in the absence, excuse me, my allergies are getting the better of me. I apologize. In the absence of an official policy on this topic, he recommended that the school board consider this new policy to address individual board member requests that would take more than 30 minutes of staff time or cost more than $50 to complete. In these, in those cases, the full board would determine what the superintendent should direct staff to do. While tonight is the first reading, we have scheduled the second reading and projected approval for the June 7 meeting, and with that, I'll leave it to the board.
Questions or comments? Ms. Ralston.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is interesting. Can I ask, how would we know, let me see, it's right here, it's the second line, see, 30 minutes of staff time, and/or requires a monetary expenditure of more than $50? How would we know how much something costs that we would ask you to do?
Well, the-
You going to give me a little menu?
The, the staff member involved, working with the superintendent, would have to estimate what that would-
How much your time-
That's correct.
-value that, okay?
Yes.
Well, mine's really high. Interesting, thank you. I just wanted to know how you were going to do that one.
Dr. Walts, would you like to help answer that?
Yes. So, again, the time, the 30 minutes or less, which, believe it or not, we do a lot of those kinds of things, so it's not the staff time being $50, it's if we had to purchase something. So, I'll give you a couple of examples. Occasionally, we'll have a staff member who suggests that maybe some certificate gets framed, okay? So, we can go out, and in a relatively short amount of time, we can order a frame, we can frame it up, it doesn't cost more than $50. Make somebody happy, it serves a good purpose, so that, that's the kind of example. But it's not $50 in staff time. We, we're not counting that.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Ralston. Dr. Walts, anyone else?
Yeah.
Ms. Jessie.
Are we asking you guys to do too much? I, I think that, I personally do not like $50 or 30 minutes, and someone has to sit in the office, and I need something, so I call you, and you say, "Well, it's more than 50, it's more than 30 minutes, and it's $50 or more." So, what happens if what I request is more than 30 minutes, and it costs $50, you say no?
It, it would ultimately come back to the school board for a decision, as a corporate body.
You know, I, I just, I, I, I don't know. I just think that there's a, perhaps a more professional way of doing this, I think, to say to a, a board member, "Look, this is going to require an extensive amount of time and effort, and could we relook at this," or something. I don't know if we need a governance or policy to say that. And, and I also want clarification, does that mean anything that is presented at the board meeting, or this, are these ancillary kinds of requests?
I would say it would be something out of the, out of the norm. So, for example, when we do the strategic framework report, or something like that, that would not be, that would not count as that, no. It would be a single, individual board member's request.
Okay, so it wouldn't be... Interesting, that's all I can say, just, interesting.
Thank you, Ms. Jessie. Mr. Deutsch.
Thank you. Thank you for, for bringing this forward and for your presentation. There seems to be a lot of prudence behind this, and it's something that's actually pretty common with other boards, just to make sure that, you know, because we only speak when we act as a, as a corporate body, so then we can very quickly address different things and make sure that they're recognized, et cetera. And then, you know, I think there is a legitimate concern right now about staff burnout, and we have to balance, you know, the concerns of the board and the concerns of individual board members. And I think this helps probably balance things and make sure that we act together as a board, and thank you all for bringing this forward.
Thank you, Mr. Deutsch. Anyone else? I would just, you know, I think it'd be interesting to see, and I certainly understand the intent, I think it'd be interesting to see how certain things pan out, we know, kind of, what you touched on, Dr. Walts, obviously, there's a lot of gray in, outside of the norm, you know, who determines the norm, what is the norm, you know, what is considered to be the norm, just, I mean, again, not, I'm not pro or con on either way, but just to give a few examples, you know, lunches with school board members. They clearly last more than 30 minutes, depending on how many school board members are there, you know, could, certainly could be more than $50, or how many, how many, you know, associate superintendents show up, or whatever the case may be. That's not board action, I know, that's, but that's something that's done on a regular basis, and for good reason. Again, I'm not taking a shot at the process, but just, there's obviously a lot of little things that come up, and, you know, and obviously, the questions from different board members are, you know, obviously, well-intended. It's, it's, we don't have staff, so in order to research information, or whatever, whatever we need, you know, I appreciate the fact that someone has to do it, and, and I think, I think at the same time, you know, I'd be curious, on the other end, as to what is approved, is, is would the board be aware on what's approved that isn't 30 minutes and isn't $50? Would we be aware of, of the requests that are made, that, that don't meet the threshold, and therefore, don't come before the board? Would we be aware of those, those requests that are, that are permitted, so to speak, for lack of a better word, that are classified as under the threshold? So, would the board be aware of who's getting things requested and approved without board approval, because they, they are under the threshold? So, you know, that type of que, those, again, there's question, I'm not, if you want to answer, you can, I'm not, I'm only proposing them as just thoughts that are, that are there. I wasn't necessarily trying to put you on the spot.
That's an easy one to respond to, because when we have those kinds of questions, we try to share that through our communications tools with the full board.
So, it'd come on like the Friday Report, or, yeah, whatever, I see, I see what you're saying. That's good. I think there's a, I think there's a lot of, just a lot of things, like I said, you know, how we get there, and of course, the irony would be, is that there's, there's, if the request itself took more than 30 minutes to do, to figure out how much it would cost, then, then that would, in theory, take board action as well, not, not to be too technical, but it would, in theory. But, again, I think there's some thought in this, and I may have some follow-up questions that hopefully don't take 30 minutes, you know, following up, but let it soak in a little bit, and, and those are my comments. Anyone else? Nope? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Walts, since your mic is warm? It is, am I on the right?
Yeah.
I'm on the right one. Dr. Walts, 20.01, superintendent's time.
Thank you, Chairman Sawyers, and members of the board. Tonight's report will be in two parts. In the beginning of the year, I always do an opening school year report, and tonight there'll be a not-too-long end-of-school report that I think you'll enjoy hearing. So, before I go into that, congratulations to Potomac High School senior David Height, who won a gold medal in welding at the State Skills USA Championship, and congratulations to the novice men's crew team at Forest Park High School on winning both gold and silver medals at the Virginia Scholastic Rowing Championships. The school division has received a Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association. This certificate recognizes the quality of the comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2016. I have news of recent grants for schools. The Environmental Protection Agency awarded the school division $31,000 to build schoolyard habitats and other science-related projects at middle and high schools. Also, the Virginia Cooperative Extension Office have awarded school garden grants to three schools, including Lake Ridge Middle. The gardens at Lake Ridge will be built in two courtyards created as a result of a new addition to the school. This will give the school two outdoor classrooms that will be used by a variety of teachers and classes. This will be a great examples for hands-on learning. I invite the Kilby Elementary School community to the ribbon-cutting ceremony and dedication for their new replacement school on Tuesday, May 23 at 6:00 p.m. Parking is limited because the contractor is still in the process of tearing down the old building. We hope those who can will walk, otherwise, there will be a shuttle bus from the parking lot of Grace Lutheran Church across from Fred Lynn Middle School. I am extremely excited to announce that we have yet another state award-winning school administrator, and this is hot off the press. Dr. Sharif Saadke, principal of Garfield High School, was just named the 2017 Outstanding High School Principal for the State of Virginia by the Virginia Association of Secondary Principals. Dr. Saadke exemplifies our world-class administrative leadership team. He will now move on for consideration at the national level. Just a little side note, I brought him from Greece, New York. I had the opportunity to attend several School of Excellence celebrations recently. Congratulations to Gravely, Rosa Parks, Mountain View, Old Bridge, Westgate, and T. Claywood Elementary Schools on their outstanding achievement, and I certainly enjoyed being there, and we had some board members there, too, so thank you for taking your time to be at several of those. And speaking of school visits, as I have done since the beginning of superintendent here in Prince William, I had a board member ask me, "Are you still doing that, and how exactly, how are you doing on that?" I visit every one of our schools at least once a year to talk with students, teachers, support staff, administrators, and parents who may be there. The number is now approaching 1,600 school visits since 2005, so we keep track of each and every one of those visits, and there you have them. I had the privilege of being presented with the Educational Leadership Award from today's students, tomorrow's teachers. I'll share the plaque. I received this on Monday, and Mrs. Ralston was at that event, and we were there to honor 170 seniors who are graduating with the intent of going into teaching. And so, we have had, as one of the three different programs to help encourage young people to go into teaching, we have a 10-year partnership with today's students, tomorrow's teachers, and it's all a part of our growing our own program to recruit our students to become teachers. The vast majority of the TSTT group are minority students going into teaching, so that's something very encouraging as well. We now have almost 300 students in the pipeline to be teachers. Please remember that the Prince William County Expo Fun and Fitness Event will be held this Saturday, May 20, at 11 to 4, at Fitzner Stadium, and the Third Annual Suicide Awareness Walk you heard about earlier at Forest Park, to Hilton, will be held also on Saturday, May 20, beginning at 9:00. And so, now in closing, I'll share a brief end-year report highlighting some of our biggest successes and giving us the opportunity to celebrate them. All right, here we go. So, one of the things that I think it's really important to focus on is our on-time graduation rate. That really shows the results of the effective teaching from kindergarten all the way through. And sometimes, in subgroups and in individual schools, there, there may be reasons why we have larger gaps than we would like. We hone in on those gaps, we work on those gaps, but the bottom line is, over time, second language learners who may not do well earlier in, in their, maybe at elementary or middle school, if they're just starting, they have to take the SOLs after two years, but by the time they get to that graduation level and have our summer school EL, summer school graduate program, and the courses that they can take there, our students with disabilities, over time, do better and better. So, again, this chart shows a little bit about how that, how that plays out, and I also wanted to remind you that we received a letter of congratulations from Steve Staples, our state school superintendent. We exceeded the state by nearly 10% for graduation, on-time graduation of EL learners, and we surpassed every other Northern Virginia school divisions. So, we're always being compared to places, many of which put a lot more money in per pupil, but we're on top in that one. All 11 high schools are in the Washington Post's top 9% of high schools nationwide. Patriot earned the first PWCS- Patriot earned the first PWCS gold medal. That puts them in the top two percent of high schools in the U.S. News and World Report, and Osborne Park, Battlefield, and Woodbridge earn silver medals, which puts them in the top ten percent. Now, we're talking about twenty-two thousand high schools. All eleven eligible high schools are in the Washington Post's top nine percent of schools nationwide with Patriot and Osborne Park, and I just said that, didn't I? Okay. Twenty-six, we're saying again, right? Twenty-six thousand. Wait a minute, where are we? Who prepared this for me? Was that Keith, was that, was that Keith Emon?
The high school news was so good, Dr. Waltz, that, I was gonna say, Dr. Waltz, maybe the high school news was so good that you just needed to stop there. That's what it's drop-mic moment, right there.
There's more good stuff coming. Okay, the latest data show that twenty percent of PWCS high school students, grade nine through twelve, were enrolled in at least one advanced course, AP IB and Cambridge. Again, that's part of the school board's strategic plans, who are making good progress in that area. The percentage of PWCS students earning advanced placement, IB or Cambridge qualifying scores, far exceeds the national average and for IB, the world average. Since twenty, or twenty oh-five, oh-six, students taking the SAT rose by thirty-eight percent and ACT participation by fifty-nine percent. Forty-seven schools have been designated as a School of Excellence, up from thirty-four last year. Next? Twenty-six thousand one hundred forty-five college credit hours were earned by our students in 2016 by scoring a three or higher on AP exams. That is a lot of savings for parents, I'll tell you that right now. Thirty-eight million dollars in scholarship money were earned by the PWCS class of 2016, and that was up seven million dollars from the previous year, and we'll update that when this year's graduates go through. Over five years, our students earned more than a hundred seventy-nine point three million dollars in scholarships. Advanced Ed recommended PWCS for our third five-year system accreditation based on impressive performance in teaching and learning, leadership capacity, and use of resources. And then finally, Hamish Brewer, principal of Okaquan, is the National Distinguished Principal for Virginia by the Virginia Association of Elementary School Principals. Nathaniel Provincio, which you heard from his staff, uh, just a little bit ago, principal of Minneville, is the Washington Post's 2017 Principal of the Year. That's the whole DC metro area, including Southern Maryland and Northern Virginia, Principal of the Year. Sharif Saadke, principal of Garfield High School, is the Outstanding High School Principal of the Year for the Virginia Association of Secondary School Principals. And I would just like to also add, I appointed each one of those individuals to their principal shifts. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Waltz. Um, the, we got a few, I think we can knock out pretty quick here. We're on to twenty-one point oh-one, uh, revision of policy six sixty-four, Guidelines for Parental Instruction Assistance. Ms. Goss gave us the, the overview of this last time. Um, do we have a motion? Ms. Williams?
Mr. Chairman, I've moved that the Prince William County School Board approved the revision of policy six sixty-four, Guidelines for Parental Instruction Assistance.
Thank you, is there a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms., Ms. Ralston. Yeah, it was a tie. Ms. Ralston.
Okay. Anyway, we both second.
There you go, wow, yeah. Discussion. Those in favor of the motion, please signify yes by raising your right hand. Ms. Jessie? Thank you, I'm sorry, you, you dropped it before I could look. I think we can, I think we're on our way towards getting there.
The vote is six yes, two absent, motion passed.
Awesome. Moving on to twenty-one oh-two, confirmation of scoreboard poll dated April twenty-eighth, 2017, title, uh, title of Independence School.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Williams?
I moved that the Prince William County School Board confirmed the board poll dated April twenty-eighth, 2017 regarding the title of the Independent School.
Uh, sorry, I clicked on some things. Uh, I got it, Ms. Williams, you made the motion. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Satterwhite.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Those in, uh, sorry, discussion. Those in favor of this motion, please signify yes by raising your right hand. Thank you.
Vote is six yes, two absent, motion passed.
And moving on to item twenty-one oh-three, confirmation of school board poll dated May second, 2017, student representative to the school board.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Williams?
I moved that the Prince William County School Board confirmed the board poll dated May second, 2017 regarding the student representative to the board.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Chairman.
Ms. Jessie?
I second.
Thank you. Discussion. Those in favor of this motion, please signify yes by raising your right hand. Thank you.
Vote is six yes, two absent, motion passed.
Okay, and we're on to the last two items of the day. The item twenty-one point zero-four, the reclassification of school nurses, Ms. Jessie. This is on for information.
Good evening Chairman Sawyers, members of the board, Dr. Waltz. I am Teresa Polk, Supervisor of School Health Services, and I will do a brief presentation on the school nurse credentials and, um, a brief, uh, little synopsis of the timeline for the proposal to move school nurses to the Certified Pay Scale. I think everybody has a copy now. Currently, we have eighty-nine school nurses. One school nurse has a hospital diploma, eight school nurses have associate degree in nursing, thirteen school nurses have master's degree, master of science degrees in nursing or other master's degrees, and sixty-seven school nurses, I'm sorry, oh, I'm supposed to be moving there, I'm sorry. Okay. Thank you, thank you. Okay, I'm sorry, I wasn't even thinking. All right, so going back, the, um, um, so thirteen school nurses with master of science degree in nursing or other master's degrees and sixty-seven school nurses with bachelor of science degree in nursing or other bachelor's degrees. One nurse is a certified diabetic educator, and we're proud to say that she is one of only two in the Commonwealth of Virginia. Two, uh, school nurses are board-certified family nurse practitioners, two are board-certified pediatric nurses, two board-certified critical care nurses, two advanced cardiac life support nurses, three national board-certified school nurses, and six are American Heart Association CPR instructors. Oops, I went back, I need to go back. All right. The timeline for a proposal to move school nurses to the Certified Pay Scale. School nurses started the initial discussions and formed a committee in two thousand and three. The committee met with the former director of the Office of Student Services for guidance in two thousand and five. Research began to ga- to gather data across the Commonwealth and nation during the years two thousand and five to two thousand and eight. As a supervisor, I discussed this, the nurses' concerns with the former director, Office of Student Services, and the former supervisor of classified personnel, and this was during the timeframe two thousand and five to two thousand and eight. In two thousand and nine, fiscal year two thousand and nine, the superintendent recommended and the school board approved a reclassification of, of the school nurses from grade ten to grade eleven. The initial draft of the proposal was prepared and reviewed by the former supervisor of classified personnel, and she advised that we needed more information, and that was in two thousand and eight. A revised draft of the initial proposal was completed but not provided to the staff during the two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen, uh, school year, and the initial proposal was streamlined and submitted to the Associate Superintendent of Student Learning and Accountability and the Director, Office of Student Services, on May third, two thousand and seventeen. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms., Ms. Jessie.
Thank you for, um, that presentation. I, um, I think I would like to, I think you have a presentation also. Can I just wait to make a response at one after? Okay, thank.
I apologize, Ms. Jessie.
No problem.
Ms. Klein.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Waltz. This, the presentation coming before you, and if I can ask the board clerk to please distribute the materials, uh, reflects information requested from Mrs. Jessie relative to the discussion on school nurses. The first couple of slides are, are sort of summary, you've seen this slide before. This reflects the information provided to the school board for the March eighth, uh, school board work session. Looks at that initial discussion and from that identified information relative to potential placement of nurses on the teacher scale under one of two options. One of those options being essentially, uh, what is the, the cheapest option for making a transition from the existing grade eleven onto grade twelve, and a second, which was about just over a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and in a second version, which was if the years of experience that were indicated on the teacher scale were applied to those individuals that are nurses on grade eleven, and they were then moved accordingly to the teacher scale, that would incur a cost of just over nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Having had this discussion with the board at the work session, and, uh, we also had it once previously in, uh, the budget discussion, I won't go through it in any more detail at this point, uh, since, since we've covered most of the material. The, the next slide simply is a reminder of, at the May third board meeting, Seagull Waters Consulting, uh, came back and discussed with the board and highlighted the issue relative to when one looks at the job description for nurses as it exists relative to registered nurses and certifications. Our current salary range reflects the data indicating that it is at or above market for each of the three key elements across the scale. A change of moving that to the teacher bachelor's lane as a percentage of market substantially increases those amounts aga- above that. Again, I won't reiterate that, the board certainly received that in open session at the last meeting. Relative to additional information in, in receiving the nurses' proposal, if you will, a couple of comments and, and thoughts regarding that information. First of all, I think certainly the focus coming out of that document, both the original document and the document that was received back on May the third, is a desire, a request relative to professional acknowledgement. In a number of ways, that proposal, as defined currently, reflects a vision more so than a plan, and that, that's not intended as a criticism, it simply reflects the fact that there's not a detailed assessment or a proposal for how to move, uh, potentially to a pay scale in regards to things like the specific placement, contract length, length of daily hours, et cetera. There is discussion in the proposal that indicates the desire really to be cost-neutral or no cost. In, in looking at that information and saying, well, if it's no cost and the focus is on professional acknowledgement, let's talk a minute about professional acknowledgement. If the issue is not about pay, because pay grades are really about pay, that's the key issue there. We've received information indicating that based on the, the nurses, that they are appropriately paid. Then the other question is, well, what about that professional acknowledgement? What are some of those specific issues that have been identified in the proposal and how might we look at those? Couple of those that are identified. First, the issue of, uh, and, uh, the, the issue in a sense of, we've heard discussion of professional or non-professional or professional and trades, et cetera. Overall, that's really a discussion of exempt versus non-exempt. And, and I wanted to, to thank Mrs. Jessie in particular, she, she made a wonderful keynote speech to the, at the retirement ceremony for Colgan High School, and one of the comments there was very specifically, professionalism has little to do with a degree. And I think that's a very important statement for all of our employees. When we look at bus drivers, when we, as far as, we expect professionalism from our employees at every level, whether that is bus drivers or secretaries, nurses, teachers, network engineers, accountants, et cetera, we expect all employees to be professional or exhibit professionalism. Now, let's make sure we define that that does not necessarily indicate that each of those job descriptions fall within the category that historically this job description was professional, if you will, because it doesn't. A bus driver or a mechanic has typically, typically been seen more as a trades environment where an accountant, a teacher, a doctor, a nurse, has been seen as traditionally more a professional and profession environment. So professionalism is really, in, in most ways, that's the biggest and the most key issue. In order to provide a world-class education to our students, we expect all of our employees to exhibit professionalism. However, when we get to looking at pay scales and Fair Labor Standards Act, it's not about trades or professions, it's about exempt versus non-exempt. There are about ten or twelve categories within the definition of whether an employee is exempt or non-exempt. The default, when you look under federal law, is actually to make the employee non-exempt because that provides greater protections to the employee. You in fact have to explain why you're making somebody exempt, and that is held to a higher standard of explanation. The, the point being again, that if we get back to the issue of, if this is intended to be a, a non-cost proposal, we can in fact look at job descriptions, we can look at categories of employees and look at how they are defined relative to being exempt or non-exempt. In a very generic sense, to the extent that nurses are currently on grade eleven, they are appropriately being paid on, on grade eleven, they are currently non-exempt, that could be reviewed, they could be made exempt employees. That in and of itself doesn't, may not go far enough because of other, in a sense, rules or practices or policies we have in this, in the school division. Within the proposal, there was a very specific, uh, concern, for example, on tuition assistance. Within our current practices, policies, we provide a greater degree of tuition, tuition assistance to teachers, a lesser amount to employees who are on grades of one through eleven, sometimes called classified, otherwise known as non-exempt, and also not paid to administrators or those on exempt scales above grade twelve. So I, I think the logic at the time that it was there was, to the extent that we have limited funds available, it was focused primarily on the intention being, let's put the money where it, in the sense of, the focus was teachers in the classroom. The, the point I want to make though is, that is not a, while we may have it currently defined as being tied to, say, grade twelve, that, that's simply an internal definition. To the extent that there's funding for tuition reimbursement, it can be adjusted or tied to any employee group. The funding levels for tuition reimbursement can certainly be adjusted relative to the budget, and they could be adjusted relative to any and all jobs classifications. There are many job classifications we have that require certifications. Anything from, we can, we'll have electricians that require certification who are on the non-exempt scale, we'll have certified professional accountants on the so-called administrative scale that require certifications, we have nurses who are certified who also have certifications. Each of those have different requirements, responsibilities, and in that sense, an adjustment certainly can be made or looked at relative to how we currently address tuition assistance. The proposal makes a, a reference or discussion relative to providing, uh, additional authority, if you will, potentially to the supervisor of nursing, to the assignment of reassign- assignment or reassignment of nurses. That components in the discussion, again, that certainly has nothing to do relative to, um, the, the pay grade that it, that- to the pay grade that a nurse would be placed on. Relative to the overall discussion, a portion of this is also a function of job description. Certainly, the assessment within the salary study is done as a function of what the job is and the job description. Relative to that, that currently does not require a bachelor's degree, it certainly requires that certification in nursing. That's certainly a key element. Adjustments for nurses or for any other individual employee group typically generate equity concerns from other employees. Historically, over the years, when we have done significant reclassifications, the school division has tried to do them in groups, which is part of the reason for the salary study, in order, one, to have independent documentation of where we are, where it's going, but at the same time to be able to look and say, to the extent if we are making a change for one employee group, that we have taken a look across the board at many of the related employee groups to ensure that we have equity within our total system. A couple of additional thoughts relative to, in a sense, as we continue to move forward, we would continue to look at and review going through the comprehensive staff review of the salary study. We are really starting and beginning that process. If you recall, in this budget, we did approve several changes relative to the salary study. We looked and for those limited number of positions, there were about a half a dozen of positions and I think about 20 people, for whom their compensation was identified as being below market at the beginning, and below market in the middle, and below market at the top, the board approved making changes for those specific positions. That's simply a start in the process, identifying essentially what we'd say is the worst-case scenarios and looking at how to move forward. As we go through that entire salary study, then certainly there is a need to look at and prioritize how the adjustments might be made. And then typically, as we've seen, I've been here long enough, to the extent that we have potential reclassifications, there are potential significant costs, and whether they get done one, one year or multiple years, I believe when Dr. Waltz first came, we were going through a process of which I think it was a three-year process of having implemented, of implementing a reclassification study that had been done. And as previously identified, in that particular one, the nurses on that one were moved from grade 10 to grade 11, albeit still remaining on the non-exempt category. As a general level of experience, certainly changes should be made in concert with potential adjustments for other employee groups relative to equity. And then at the same time, like many things that come up in the budget, in the budget process, or even in sort of, say, work rules and that kind of thing, continuing to look at and review funding and eligibility. Tuition reimbursement is mentioned, I put it here specifically, simply because that is one that's specifically mentioned in the report as being one of, one of the issues to say, this would provide an opportunity to provide additional recognition to the extent that it would be seen as more equitable amongst employee groups. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Ms. Jessie.
I want the slide that has Mrs. Jessie's name to be placed up again, please. You know, the slide that Mrs. Jessie talks about professionalism? Please put that slide back up on the screen.
Just a moment.
Okay. Thank you. You know, at the last board meeting, I don't like surprises. I don't like to chastise people from, in a public forum, and from the dais. But I have to say to you, Mr. Klein, when I looked at your putting my phrase up there as a justification for not giving these people the credentials that they need, I have to say, oh, no, you didn't. That is an insult to me. That was not what I meant. I meant that everybody, my mother cleaned houses for years. I clean houses, and I did it in a professional way. But while I was cleaning those houses, I was trying to find a way to get out, to get the credentials, so that I didn't have to clean houses. I was taught that everything you did, you do it well, and you do it in a professional manner. I just had my custodian in my home this weekend, my daughter's getting married, the most professional person I've ever met. But if she could get a degree, she would. I had Miss Shirley Bunch in my home, who was an aide at my school, and she says I chased her up and down the hall to get a degree. Took her 10 years to get a degree because she not only wanted to be a professional, she was a professional as an aide, but she wanted to be a professional with credentials. These people have credentials. They didn't ask for all of this. All I wanted was to find a way to grant these people, these nurses, the classification that they seek. And they have been seeking this, from what I can see, since 2003, before Dr. Waltz came here. And apparently, it's been lost in the shuffle. They should not have had to come before us to ask to be treated as a teacher on a teacher's scale. That's all they asked. And I asked this school system to find a way to do that. You have two proposals here. One costs $131,000 a year, yet we're talking about $15,000 or $20,000 to move a school board into another location. I don't get it. I just don't get it. I was looking at, you know me, I always try to do as much research as I can do. And it says the nursing shortage is expected to intensify as baby boomers age and the need for health care grows. One million new registered nurses will be needed to meet the demands for nursing care at schools and hospitals. We have this thing as a principle, I know we have what was called early hires. Early hires are in categories that are difficult to find. This is a difficult-to-find category. To say to them that we need to put them all in with everyone else, or it's going to look at, we moved other people based on the study. The Seagulls and Waters Study, Slide 37, Number 2, says that we should consider addressing the requests by nurses to be paid on a teacher's, on a teacher's scale. So I am asking you to find a way to present to this board some possibilities of a way to reclassify the nurses this school year. And I'm looking at all the various pieces of revenue. This year, our total operating revenue was increased by 5%. We have state revenue up 5%. We have Medicaid funding. There are all kinds of ways that if we wanted to do the right thing, that we could find a way to do the right thing. I'm sorry I'm so emotional about this, but I find it incredible that this school system, the fact that you're going to pay them more, I don't care. That's not the issue. So we pay our nurses more than other counties. We pay our teachers less. We didn't do anything about that, but we can't pay nurses more because we'll be out of sync? I'm sorry, but it sounds like I am reprimanding people, and I guess I am. I am, because it makes absolutely no sense to me that these people since 2003 have been asking to be reclassified. They have shown up in this boardroom and asked to be reclassified. So with that, I am just asking you to come back at the next meeting and look at some way of finding the $131,000. Option one, that's all I wanted. I knew you didn't want to do it, so I really didn't need all the rationale. They know you don't want to do it because they've been here two or three times. So I'm sorry, but maybe the rest of you should go out and get Skittles like I did last week because this, this is just, we shouldn't have to beg for this. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Jessie. Anyone else? Ms. Ralston.
Yes. I've now become kind of confused. Oh, sit, 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 sit. I'm a little confused. I understand if we move, where are you? There you are. If you move the nurses on to whichever professional scale, the teachers, then the cost goes up, or do we actually have to bring along some of the other people who feel left out and dejected? Even so much as bus drivers?
There's two components to that. The first part would be taking the current placement and salary on grade 11.
Right.
And shifting it to grade 12. Since the beginning salary, if you will, on grade 12 is higher than the beginning salaries on grade 11. It would involve, essentially, the analysis was, what's the cheapest way to do it? Taking, and in this case, the first seven steps on grade 11 would move up to grade 1 on grade 12.
Yeah, I got it.
Because that's the nearest pay amount that would associate with each of those without losing money and rounding up to the next highest amount. Obviously, that creates a couple of issues relative to, within the seven years of experience there, the person that's on grade 1, step 1, moving to grade 12, step 1, will see a substantially greater increase than the individual that's on grade 11, step 7, moving to grade 12, step 1. That also creates the potential going forward that that means the first seven years of experience are tied to grade, to step 1 on grade 12. When we go to hire teachers in the future, in order to be equitable and fair with existing employees, we would have to hire the incoming nurses for the first seven years of experience on to that first step. And there are a couple, I mean, that's the example. There are several other steps that essentially have condensing of steps, if you will, where there are steps on grade 11 that go to two or three steps combined on the grade 12. The most significant issue that occurs is really primarily at grade 12, step 1, because that one starts at a significantly higher salary. The other component is that where we have had, the second part of your question, where we have had reclassifications in the past, that has been an issue with other employee groups relative to if we move one group, why are you moving them as opposed to me? That's just experienced, we've seen it even in the cases where we've had significant salary studies to say, the salary study has indicated this is what's appropriate.
Okay. We spoke, so what did you come up with creating a new column altogether? Did you get a chance to?
There is a potential.
Okay.
Let's talk about our timeline. First of all, I'll give you a simplistic sense. There's the potential that we simply take grade 11 and say, there's a grade 11 non-exempt and a grade 11 exempt. Okay? They're still grade 11, they have the same pay amounts, one group is exempt, one group is not exempt. That differentiates between, if you will, several groups of employees. Potentially, it also has the opportunity that if there were other employee groups that were considered non-exempt, that would, could potentially be moved to an exempt status without changing pay grade. A next step potentially is, relative to the entire scale, that's not to say another grade could not be created or inserted into the process, but that's a whole substantial level of additional work and analysis because you're really into, what are you doing with your entire scale? How is that impacting all of the employee groups? And at the same time, to the extent that we have in hand already a classification study, you don't want to change the target in the midst of, as you're trying to realign them. That'd be my recommendation.
Well, at this moment, we're at a standstill. There's, we're not moving over, up, or around. So let's look at just creating a whole new.
Grade.
Yes, thank you. And so they start out wherever they're starting, and they're on that one, and then it's possible to bring over some more people, I don't know, but what I'm saying is, just create a new one, a new step. Not add on a step or subtract a step, but add a new, pardon me?
Dr. Waltz has a comment, I believe.
He can do that, he's good.
So what this really boils down to is, we just need direction from the board. We need a vote from the school board at what they would like us to do. When I went back, looked at the work session, we had a motion to do the one plan, the $100,000. It did not even get a second in the work session. So there's no way we're going to go back and do that plan because the board did not authorize it. So then we talked about doing the other plan, a motion wasn't made. There's other options as well, but we need a vote, I am asking for direction from the school board of what, if anything, they would like for me to do. Now, we don't have it on for a vote tonight.
No, no, no. It's just on for information.
But I'm happy to do what the majority of the board would like. No problem.
Sure. I think, I was just going to answer to that, and then I'll go to you, Mr. Deutsch. It'll be real quick. I think ultimately what we can do is, if this is something that I know Ms. Jessie wants, we can, she can work with, this can be on the next board meeting or whatever, wherever she wants it to be, and to work with that exactly on what she wants to do and the options that she wants to see, and that can be brought before the board, and we can do just that, Dr. Waltz. It would be the goal. Mr. Deutsch.
Thank you. I've got a couple of questions for Teresa, if she's got a second.
Yes.
All right. So we've had a bunch of discussions since the budget work session. Can I get from you what exactly it is? Well, I'll just back up. We're in a, we're in a unique situation where we have a certain category of employees requesting a specific change. And so we're trying to figure out what, what do we change, if anything, and in the context of, are there more comprehensive changes that should be done overall for employees overall? But then, so what is it that you exactly want? Are you guys looking for a pay increase?
Mr. Deutsch and members of the board, Dr. Waltz, it is not really so much about the money. The nurses are professionals, and yet they're basically being treated as though they're not, okay?
Okay. So what specifically is it that, where you aren't being treated as professionals?
Well, because they're on the classified pay scale. You know, in no other setting would a nurse be employed and be on a scale as they are here in the school division.
So if it's just about being on the classified pay scale, would it change from non-exempt to exempt? Is that what you're looking for in terms of being treated like professional?
That would be the entry level, yes. And the concern is, you know, when we look at.
You say, you say entry level, what are you looking for beyond that?
Well, of course, the nurses want to be compensated appropriately. I mean, our nurses' salaries are all over the place. I have nurses who've worked here for 10 years, and they're making under $50,000. That's a significant thing when, you know, people have kids in college, they've got mortgages to pay, whatever. But it's not so much that everybody in the system, the 89 people we have, are expecting a big pay jump. I mean, I know Mr. Klein had said to me previously. I mean, I know Mr. Klein had said to me previously that, you know, if that, if at some point the nurses got moved up, you know, there would be some who would get a significant increase, and there would be others who would get very little. I get that, but...
But, but does, does the change from exempt or non-exempt to exempt, does that answer the professionalism issue that y'all are raising? Because there isn't a professional versus non-professional pay scale that we have, it's one...
Okay, there's, right, but there's a certified pay scale, and there's the classified, correct?
Okay, so, so a change to being in an exempt position answers that for y'all?
I'm sorry, I'm...
A change to making an exempt position answers that for y'all?
Well, I think that would be part of it. I think people still want to be compensated appropriately.
But, but you began by saying it wasn't a compensation thing, and that's, I guess, I, I'm, anyway.
Okay, well, I, I...
Now, are there, are there other positions that you think, that as you look at other employee groups within the division, that you think need to be similarly changed?
Well, I'm sure they, they're, they probably are, Mr. Deutsch, but unfortunately, I don't know all of those other positions. But the one thing I would like to share is, the school nurses, social workers, psychologists, OT, PT, speech, and the school counselors are all employees who are already on the certified pay scale. And the nurse is, the nurses are that one group that are not. And so, what is the difference? I mean, how, why is it that all of those folks, who are not teachers as well, are already there, and the nurses are on the other side?
Mr. Klein, what grade are those positions that are just listed on?
The ones she's described are on grade 12, that's correct.
Okay. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Deutsch. Okay? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And last but not least, before Board Matters, Ms. Jessie, you have one more. The SMART goals presentation, generically speaking, on evaluations. Thank you, Ms. Jessie.
It's the only reason this is being done in a public setting. I really wanted to do something in closed session with a select group of people, but we had some scheduling issues, and that's why I'm here tonight. So, is it clicking? The superintendent was talking about only 30 minutes for certain items, and I've been on this board for quite some time, and I think that there's miscommunication, I think on both ends. I think the school board, as a board, we're giving them too many things to do in, in one sense, and then I think on the other end, the superintendent's staff is giving us so much information, and it's so time-consuming, that at the end of the day, you can't really make a decision, because you have too much information. And some of the board members know exactly what I'm talking about. We have to come up with some type of fidelity. And fidelity is where everybody, when you say a certain word, everyone in the school system understands that word, and that word is fidelity. Reducing redundancy and workload in reports. My daughter says sometimes I, I just do this on the board, and I think you saw that tonight, when I'm sort of frustrated. And sometimes I've asked the superintendent's staff to present something for me, and they come back with so much information, I think maybe I have miscommunicated what I wanted them to give me. And I remember one time, we had 225 slides, and I thought, what happened? Why did this happen? And then, specific targets. I've been in this business for 40 years. I wrote Title I grants for 10 years. I wrote grants for school system for 10 years. I've done workshops throughout the United States on preparing proposals. And I know a little bit about this, and I'm not saying that you have to do exactly what I'm asking you to do, but I would like, for the sake of just trying to get us all some degree of sanity, that we think about what I'm going to present tonight. We need to have targeted and very specific agreed-upon goals by the school board and the administrative staff. It has to be collaborative. I'm not sure that it has been collaborative. And the most important thing is that we use research-based practices. We can't just do anything that we want to do and not know if the research supports it. Sometimes you've heard me use the word meta-analysis, and it just sounds like a big word, but it's not, it's more than just a big word. It is that you don't do anything without making sure the research supports it, and that there are many pieces of research that you're looking at when, when you're doing this. Am I doing this?
There you go.
Okay. The, in, in any evaluation program, in the evaluation process, and when you write a program, there has, in, in the state of Virginia, Virginia Department of Education writes, in its plans for the administrators, for the superintendent, and for programs, they ask for consistency. But in every evaluation process, there is this thing called student academic process. It has to be a significant component. There are seven standards for administrators, teachers, and superintendents. Standard seven, in all three, is weighted 40 percent. Forty percent, because that is the academic standard. And that's, that's why it has a heavier weight. They're all are considered when the strategic plan is presented. When you present a strategic plan, goal one, really has a lot of the academic information. When we do a program evaluation, it should be formative and not summative. In other words, I think the last way we did some of the evaluation process of programs, we went to the end of the year, and no one knew what was going on along the way. We heard tonight about professional learning communities, and this is where we're going as a, as a school system. First of all, there are just three components. It's not a program, it's a way, it's a focus on learning instead of teaching. And I know earlier we were talking about testing versus non-testing. In a professional learning community, you're focused not on what they taught, you're focused on whether or not learning is taking place. So, what it meant to me, as a principal, I started spending less time looking at what teachers were planning to do, collecting all those plan books, and looking at whether or not learning was taking place. A collaborative culture, you heard them talk about that tonight, and I will tell you that there are so many objectives that teachers have to teach, they can't get to them all. And so, the only way for them to be, have high performance is to create a collaborative culture. And that collaborative culture means that everybody in that building has to know what's going on, where the kids are, and what do we all need to do to make sure that happens. And the focus is on results. The four critical questions, I've talked about this before, is what do we expect students to learn? And there's this one, two words, it talks about, is it viable, and is it a guaranteed curriculum? All of our kids should be guaranteed the same curriculum, but it has to be viable. And I, I know that our PWA representative tonight, our director, talked to us about the, the workloads that teachers have. And so, they have to collaborate, they have to figure out, how can we teach these kids? How do we respond when they have not learned it? And then, what do we do when, when those who have learned it? How do we respond when they do not learn it? And then, what do we do with the ones that already know? In other words, we're looking at moving all those kids in that higher group. Those kids, we're, we're moving kids in the lower group, but we're also moving kids in the higher group. And so, we get to this thing that we talk about as a SMART goal. And in the SMART goal, at our school, for example, once you got the 90 percent, then you looked at advanced placement. And so, the middle-class schools that often have kids who are coming to school, like the Jessie girls and people on this board, your kids come to school reading. So, you want your kids to move faster, but in a professional learning community, everybody's moving. And then this thing called a SMART goal. That acronym means different things to different people, and I would like for the school system to consider, I'm not making it a policy, I'm just asking you to consider, understanding that we all use the same acronym. And this is the book, Ange Zemus and O'Neill, and I think they were in the county, I'm not sure, five or six or seven years ago. But when you go through the training, which you'll go through this year, because I know you have several people coming in, the goal has to be specific. And I think in one instance, we were given the superintendent some things to do, we gave him a list. Instead of giving him a specific goal, it has to be measurable, and it has to be attainable. In other words, is it, is the goal, when we're given directions on a program, when we think about it, think about whether or not it's attainable. I've had people come to me and say, for example, we're going to go for safe harbor. If they had a 30 percent pass rate, I had a school that had 30 percent pass rate one year, and I said, what's your goal for next year? They said, safe harbor. Safe harbor means if we get 3 percent, 10 percent, you, you can make school of excellence almost. But safe harbor, I said, I wouldn't get out of bed for 35 percent or 33 percent. So, is it attainable? Is, is that goal too big or too small? I don't want to go into detail, but Mr. Murphy, who's also a friend of ours, talked to us about the fact that you got a gap of 37 percent in some areas. Do you want them, do you want us to move the whole 35 percent in one year? Or are you looking at moving next five years or the next three years at a, at a certain pace? It has to be result-oriented, and it has to be time-bound. There has to be a date on the goal. It has to be specific, you have to be able to measure it, it should be attainable, it should be result-oriented, and it should be time-bound. At the end of the year, and this is just my formula, you can do whatever you guys want to do as a school system, but I have a simple formula. We all got together, and we asked, what do we keep? So, when you're doing the program, and even with the superintendent and his staff, you, some of the things you have are working, and you want to put them in that plan, evaluation plan, but some of the things that you keep, you don't need to put in the plan. We don't need to have everything that's happening in the school system. One night, I remember everybody, every department was here, and I'm thinking, that's a lot of work. And I felt badly, because I didn't want all of that, you know? What are we keeping in place? We may make a list, but what are we going to keep? Then tweak. What do we need to modify? What do we need to change? Seek is, what is not working, and we need to seek new ways of doing it. When you write a SMART goal, the first thing they're going to ask you is, what are you going to do differently? If I ask you for a plan, and you come in the boardroom, and you just list everything you've always done, then I'm going to ask questions from the podium, because you're giving me everything that you're already doing. I don't want to know everything that you're doing, because then you end up with piles and piles of information. This, the last one, is the most difficult thing that Doug Reeves and various really high-powered people talk about, which is delete. I always had a problem with staff, they didn't want to delete anything, because they were tied to a program. I, I think you said, we have too many things. You have to sit down and say, what are we going to delete? The teachers cannot continue doing it, the staff cannot continue doing it, we've got so many things. So, I'm just asking you to sit down and ask, what do you want to delete? This is what a SMART goal looks like. And the school district has a goal, for example, 90, 90 percent of students in the, in the state, the district goal, the state goal, and then you have a school goal. So, if you look on the left, you see, what is our reality? The reality is that last, where are we now? In 2016, '17 school year, 70 percent of our students met the state goal. Where do we go from here? This little column is very important, because this year, they set a goal of 75 percent. Now, the district goal is 90 percent. Another person may, the school may have had a different goal of 90 percent. It depended where they were last year, but you got to look at where you were before you can figure out where you're going to go. And then, the, and, when, when you get to training on professional learning communities, you're going to see there's a column for actions or steps. Who's going to do it? How often? And what are, what is going to be the evidence? That way, when the program comes to us on the board, or when it comes to the superintendent, all we have to do is look at this little chart and say, this is where you were, this is where you're going, and this is how you're going to do it. You pick two or three or four things, instead of a thousand things. This is another goal. 90 percent of our elementary students will have, and this is not an academic goal, I just picked this as another goal. 90 percent of our elementary schools will have science labs by 2020, as measured by the end-of-year facilities report. So, it's very specific, it's measurable, it's attainable, hopefully, and then it's results-oriented, and it's time-bound. So, our reality, our current reality, I just made this up, 80 percent of our schools had science labs. Next year, we are looking at 85 percent of our schools having science lab. It's a very simple formula. It can help us streamline, so we don't have to have that $50 or 30 minutes, or drive the superintendent and his staff insane, that they have to put in a governance policy with us. This is a special ed goal. So, Principal McHoney will close the achievement gap in math between non, the non-disability group and the, and the special, these SWDs, by 10 percent, as measured by the SOLs. So, the current reality, the gap between SWDs and non-SWDs, it's 35 percent. This year, we will reduce it by 5 percent. Now, I'm not being critical of the goal that you showed, where you showed us how many students were graduating from the high school, special ed, but if you're asked, if I'm asking you to tell me about the special ed, I may want to know about the 95 percent, that's nice, but I'm not asking you to give that to me now. You understand what I'm talking about, Dr. Waltz? What I'm saying in that? In other words, when you're writing a program goal, you stay just with those goals, and don't feel the need to give us all the other things, which you still may want to give us, but for the report. In other words, when I had to write a proposal, I may be doing a lot of wonderful things, but they only wanted to know about the things that I've listed as my goals, and where I was when I started, and where I'm going to go, and what did I do to get there. And I think that's the end of this presentation. I just wanted to do this, because I, I am a person that does not believe in people working themselves to death. And when I see a whole package of stuff come to me, I go like, something happened here communication-wise. And whether you want, you want to use this formula for SMART goals or not, we need to look at ways that we can streamline the information flow, because if we don't streamline the information, when, when we don't streamline the information flow, we increase the workload for your staff, we increase the workload for principals, and then, you know, I used to say, you know, all God's children got notebooks, and everybody has a notebook, and they have a notebook full of stuff that doesn't serve our purpose very well. So, hopefully, I've been able to, to maybe bring some information to the board. I'm very sorry, but I'm very nervous tonight, because it's been a very, very difficult night for me. Thank you.
Comments from the board?
Okay.
Mr. Deutsch?
Thank you. So this was an oddity. I think we had a discussion before about having a SMART goals discussion in reference to the superintendent's evaluation. And there was, what we had voted on before was to, for you to go ahead and brief us before we start the evaluation. This was not about SMART goals. This was your rant at the superintendent about all your pet peeves. It took eight minutes to get to SMART goals. This was a 20-minute essentially rant. And when we talk about professionalism, this level of berating staff is not professionalism. And it's the reason that we're losing darn good talent in this school division. The school division's already mandated by VDOE to use SMART goals. They've been using it for decades. And VDOE changed results-oriented to realistic five years ago. This is something the school division's already doing. And I am, most of this whole lecture was directed at, the superintendent directed at staff about what your issues were with them. This was not a, we're just going to share and, you know, inform other board members about how SMART goals work. So this was, this was very off-base. And I was very disappointed with where this went.
Thank you, Ms. Deutsch.
May I respond? I am very sorry that you were disappointed, but no, we are not writing SMART goals. First of all, I was supposed to present it in closed session. I couldn't present it in closed session, excuse me. I could not present it in closed session for some scheduling situation. Then, excuse me, I'm talking. You don't talk down to me because I'm not going to, I'm not going to talk down to you. I'm just going to tell you.
Your entire conversation was talking down to staff.
Mr. Deutsch, you don't, you don't have the floor.
You don't have the floor. I presented this because I have watched these people come in here with 200 slides. I have met with them. And I'm concerned because somewhere, I said, somewhere in my communication with them or in their communication with me, we were not on the same page. I wanted to make sure that at least people understood that SMART goals, if, SMART goals, R can stand for resource, R can stand for relevance, R can stand for realistic. If you go back into the state VDOD, they're, that's going to stand for different things. When you are being trained as a professional learning community, SMART goals is results-oriented. That's what they're going to tell you. And so I was supposed to present it in closed session for the superintendent. And, and, excuse me, Mr. Deutsch, I'm talking. I am, and I will continue. I will turn to the staff and I will say to you, I have never done anything to berate anybody in this room and I will never do it. And when I, when a person presents, I am not here to talk about what I did. I've been trained as a professional learning community school for 15 years. So I know what the training means. And I know that what we did, I didn't, I didn't want to talk about the superintendent's evaluation. So I tried to talk about the school evaluation.
Let's be careful to keep it generic as well, just so we're, just so we're clear. I want to make sure we keep it generic. I know you're talking about SMART goals, so I just wanted to.
Thank you.
Correct, you just want to make sure we keep it generic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Williams?
Okay. There's a point of privilege when you sit on this board and you listen to people who are speaking to you. You, because we sit up here, we're privy to more information and therefore, our perspective is shaped differently. When Lily stood up here, I don't know what presentation you were listening to. And most of the time, I was thoroughly interrupted in my ability to listen from conversations down on the end of the dais. So I know that you, Mr. Deutsch, at this point, I'm addressing you specifically, have a unique talent and be able to do multiple things while listening. All of us do not have that talent. And what I noticed and picked up from this presentation was Ms. Jessie trying to be as generic as possible. Because the point of her making this presentation, she was told she could not do it in closed session because it was not specific closed session-related. So I, for one, don't consider myself an expert on SMART goals. And I'm not coming to her aid because we work together often or any of that nature. But I'm severely tired of us beating up on each other when we're trying to, in fact, educate each other. It doesn't make any sense. Everything each individual board member gets up here and presents, I would hope is not for some sort of personal gain or personal whatever. I mean, we can't, we cannot continue this type of attitude towards each other if we're going to work together. Now, I understand if you sit up here and you hear other things that we talk about in closed session or amongst conversation with each other, then you can, of course, apply whatever someone on the other end of that podium is saying in your mind, thinking, well, this is specific to that, this is specific to this. If you're an audience member or a member of the staff or anyone who's not in part of that conversation, those thoughts wouldn't occur to you. You would have no idea to attach whatever she is saying to where this should have been discussed or where it shouldn't have been discussed because that's not how it was presented. If you look through her presentation, she's got examples from school system, the division, different schools, different, dealing with special education students. I mean, to simply say that this was directed at the superintendent, his evaluation, the only reason you would think that is because we had a discussion in closed session, which is not an appropriate thing to discuss out here or to accuse Ms. Jessie of doing from the dais. If, if we have a problem with each other or there's an issue, there's a time and a place to have that conversation. And hopefully, I would think that as professional adults, that we would start with asking questions first instead of assuming what it is the intent of the person speaking. That's what I try to do and I would hope that everyone else do it. I'm not saying that I'm an expert, but I think when we start off a conversation by accusing someone of doing something without checking first, we're already setting ourselves up for disaster. And that's been a continual problem here. And the simple fact that we couldn't get through a simple discussion or a presentation by one of our fellow board members is ridiculous. You would want proper respect when you're sitting up there. If you had information to present to us, I would want to listen to you. Whether I agree with you or not, or whatever I think your perspective is, I would think that that's an appropriate time, such as now, to ask questions, to gain clarity, not to accuse. I think it really does us a disservice. It's a bad example for us to be setting for the public. This was an opportunity for us to learn something. And Ms. Jessie is absolutely correct. I've sat in this seat for three years. I've heard SMART goals presented, not only from Ms. Jessie, from this, even from this evening. Minneville uses SMART goals. They're a professional learning community. They gave a best practices presentation because clearly, the rest of the division is not doing the identical thing they are doing. That's why we're here, is so we can learn, we can better the school division, and we can do it together. We're not always going to agree on our methodology, but we do always deserve to respect each other. And if we have things that are negative, I would hope that we would continue to honor our own code of ethics and what being an adult is and have private conversations and not embarrass each other in public or assume things. I'm not an expert. I'm sorry, Ms. Jessie, I was not entertained and riveted by your SMART goals presentation, but I did learn something and I think that that's the point that you intended. Because I have said here, I have heard SMART goals be defined in multiple different ways from multiple different sources. We've had an elementary school, I think Old Bridge came last year and presented. So this is important. It's important for all of us in the division who do evaluations, whether it's the school board, whether it's an administrator, whether it's a principal, whether it's teachers in professional learning communities. I'm sure there's evaluation all the time, self-evaluation, evaluation of your community, your professional learning community. I mean, it's continuous. And in the professional world, even certain industries are getting away from annual evaluations to continual evaluations because they find that that's more effective. So while I'm not an expert on this, I do appreciate, Ms. Jessie, you taking the time out to, to try to educate us. And the point being that we have some fidelity in the system, which is what we struggle with. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Is that it? Okay, thank you. All right, we're pushing 11 o'clock. We're on Board Matters. Mr. Deutsch, I was trying to say this to you earlier. I'll start with you and then we'll work our way down.
I'll pass.
Ms. Ralston?
I just want to congratulate the principal of Garfield one more time, Dr. Saki, for his newest honor. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Ralston. Ms. Williams?
Look at the mouse. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to say thank you to the gentlemen of Omega Psi Phi fraternity for being the primary host for Prince William County Youth Summit that was held this past weekend at Osborne Park. I attended as a parent, if that's one of the few times that I get to just wear that title. I thought it was very informative. There were over 300 students and parents in attendance from all over the county, which I thought was very amazing. And they talked about things that we discuss in the Parents Summit. I thought it was nice to see community doing the same thing for those who did not have the opportunity to make our Parents Summit in January. And I just wanted to express my thanks to Omega Psi Phi and all of the other contributing hosts for the Youth Summit. I also attended the first LEGO League Fun Day at Osborne, no, was it Osborne? Yes, Osborne Park. Okay, may I have, Stonewall was the Youth Summit, sorry. And what made this so awesome and so special to me is that my oldest was a member of Rockledge Elementary's first LEGO League after-school club. And at that time, he's now in 10th grade. At that time, they had a LEGO table, someone had donated, and some supplies that were donated. And it was legitimately a club of like six kids and they were just excited. They were going to build robots. And to see the growth and progress from going to that to having, I stopped by Rockledge's table. They have kits that look like they would make the top crafter jealous. I mean, they, it was just amazing. And I say this all to say that we, Prince William County, hosted this event. This is for only elementary school robotic teams. There were 111 teams in attendance. Why is this a big deal? The world championship only had 108 registered teams and their event was in a big fancy dome. And here we are in our county hosting 111 just elementary school teams in a high school cafeteria slash gym. And I tell you that when I say it was packed, it was packed. The kids were smiling, they were having a good time. And not only do the elementary school kids compete against each other, the middle school and the high schools, high school students who come, serve as volunteer referees, judges, they come back after they've left elementary school and they continue to help. And I wanted to give a special shout-out to Ms. Denise Carroll Spark, everyone who's involved in the robotics program. For me, what makes it special and Ms. Carroll so awesome, other than her fabulous tutus she wears at every event, is the fact that she just knows all of the kids. She remembered my son from the very first time. And, you know, anyone who can make a 16-year-old smile, I think that's just amazing. And it didn't have anything to do with sports, money, or food. So that was just awesome. I just want to say thank you as a parent and just as a school, a member of the school system for your continued support of our program and organizing it. I mean, it's just absolutely amazing. I'll have some pictures next week for that. I just, I mean, next school board meeting, I am a slacker when it comes to technology and making sure our department had the pictures, so I apologize. I saw several teams and I promise, I promise you, next school board meeting, I will put the pictures up there. And the last two things I wanted to mention was that we have a, our joint CIP committee meeting this coming Saturday, along with everything else on the earth that occurs on the 20th. It will be at Potomac View Elementary School. We start bright and early at 7:30 a.m., so last time I checked, that would be the first activity on the 20th. I hope that members of the public will come out and join us. We will start our day by touring Potomac View Elementary and then continuing on with our business for the day. And last but not least, circling back to Garfield High School, they will be hosting the Relay for Life on Saturday, starting at 12. This is an annual event that occurs at Garfield High School. I just wanted to mention that for anybody who wanted to come out and support the American Cancer Society. I myself will be there because I'm related to an awesome cancer survivor, my mom. And I think this is a really neat event and it also is another opportunity to interact with our lovely principal over there, Mr. Saki, because he's usually in attendance with his bright giant smile. So I look forward to doing that on Saturday and thank you for the time.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Ms. Sarway?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I first want to make sure to mention, Mr. Brand is not with us tonight because of the death of his father-in-law, the Honorable Kurt Wonderly. Mr. Wonderly served 16 years in the Nassau City School Board. And I just want to say our thoughts and prayers with Julie and Sean and their family. And we look forward to Mr. Brand being back with us at the next meeting. As a part of being on the school board, we get invited to different community events. And it was a pleasure to be invited to the National Day of Prayer Breakfast and the first Thursday of May. And it was a really great event, lots of people. Mrs. Jessie was also in attendance. Really enjoyed being that, want to thank them for the invitation. And several school of excellence events. Mountain View Elementary School's principal, Mrs. Adrian Harrison, was here earlier tonight. Want to give a shout-out to the fourth and fifth grade students who got up extra early to sing to us. And then their, their TV crew that morning gave their first remote broadcast for the announcements. It was a lot of fun to be at Mountain View Elementary School for their school of excellence. Also went to Ronald Wilson Reagan's Middle School, School of Excellence event. I want to thank the PTSO for their very generous donation of $16,500 to the school. It was exciting to be there for that. I also want to thank Abdullah for the amazing speech he gave. Mrs. Jessie, I want to tell you, he was a, he was an oratorical winner in the 2017 MLK contest. And he was an incredible speaker. Was also pleased to see him at the recent Saluting Our Stars event. Want to give a shout-out to Megan Webb, who did a solo performance a cappella of the Star Spangled Banner. That was amazing. And then also went to the Gravely Elementary School, School of Excellence Celebration. Want to thank Mr. Kelchon and staff for their incredible welcome. And I want to give a shout-out to the Gravely Groovers, who also got up early. Not only was it early for them, but it was the night after their concert. And so they stayed up late the night before, got up early the next morning to come and sing for us. And it was a pleasure to be at Gravely Elementary School, to give congratulations to them. And we're all continuing the school of excellence events for different schools and looking forward to attending a few more, one tomorrow and some next week. Recently, we've had some parents come to the school board meetings and talk about building and concerns about facilities and different things like that. I just brought one of the old ones that I have. This is the Approved Capital Improvements Program, just an example of what we have available. We get a hard copy, but it's available online for anybody. So if you go to the facilities website, you can find our capital improvements programs going back several years. You can go through, you can look and see how our capital improvement, capital improvements program, CIP program, has changed over the years as we've had an increase in the number of students, as there's been a demand for different things in different areas. You can see how that's changed. And it's fascinating to look through here for each school. You can find data on the schools. Trying to get to an example of one. You can see when a school was constructed. You can see when maintenance and repair was done recently. You can read about when it was last renovated, what the program capacity is, which I will point out, for elementary school, we've recently updated that. We're still working on middle school and high school capacity. But it's fascinating to be able to look at this and see the age of our different schools, see when additions were done, see renovations, and it gives a history. You can also find student enrollment data, which is also very helpful. There's some different maps. There's a lot of great information. So I encourage citizens to go through and look at it. And you'll learn more about our school division. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Sarway.
Diane got me off. Anyway, just wanted to congratulate Old Bridge. I went to their school of excellence and, you know, they always put on, one of the things that they do that I really enjoy is that they involve, they involve their students and they involve their staff. I know Dr. Waltz was there and Mr. Goodfellow was there. And it was phenomenal, it was a production. Also, my sorority has a spotlight on youth program every year and gave scholarships to, I think, about four students this year. And students from all the high schools were well-represented. I attended the Head Start meeting. I'm on that particular council. And one of the things I want to, I'm not sure who I should say thank you to, but I'm very pleased that Title I is now going to be part of the preschool program. We're going to be doing some preschool program with Title I funds coming up next year. And the Saluting Our Stars, you guys knocked it out of the park. It was wonderful. I just, everything was done well. I think everybody had a good time. I don't know about your singing. It was a little bit off and playing the tuba, I don't know. But anyway, that's what we do when you're a principal or when you're a superintendent. They get to make you do the fun things. And actually, they just make fun of you. But that's part of the job. I want to have a special shout-out to Mrs. Ella Brown. I was part of the, Denise McPhail and I were instrumental in getting Fannie Fitzgerald's school named after her. And we divided up responsibilities. And my job was to call Fannie Fitzgerald and ask, tell her I wanted. And I just want to, I don't know, was it your idea? I don't know whose idea it was, Keith or Mr. Iman? I'm sorry, Mr. Iman?
Well, it came from a conversation with, with you, Mrs. Jessie.
I, I just want to thank you because she got a chance to be recognized by her peers. And I, I love the fact that the kids stood up. Uh, I did a presentation over at Kogan and we, talking about Fannie Fitzgerald because they're gonna do a play. And I was surprised at the end that the kids came up to me and said, thank you for sharing. The kids want to know their history, I think perhaps more than the adults. And I think that's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jessie. I'll be very brief and, and this is quick research from the dais, so I, I may have, uh, I may be off here, so I won't, I won't stand behind my, my data research immediately. But we should probably also review the September twenty-first meeting. Um, that's when we voted on the September seventh minutes. And if memory serves, the September seventh minutes is when Mr. Deutsch challenged, uh, the decision of the chair to, to cut off citizens' comment time. And if I'm looking at the, the minutes that we voted on December, or September twenty-first, it's also not in those minutes as well. Uh, so we did have a conversation there about that and, uh, I don't remember any other times, but that would have been, that would have been one of those ones. Again, from memory and I apologize if I'm wrong, I'm, I'm going a little bit off. The meeting would have been on nine seven, the minutes would have been approved on nine twenty-one. And so looking at the, looking at the minutes on the nine twenty-one agenda, um, that, there wasn't anything about that, uh, that, that challenging the decision, the chair with, if memory serves, failed. So there are all those types of things. Just a little clarification, I'm not gonna go into the weeds on this because this isn't, um, a lot of people, you know, I know, I know there's a lot of people who like to use the public cameras and the microphones to, to make their little political videos. Um, that's not my role. But, uh, what, 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 what my role is here is to make sure we understand, on the, on the, I want to make sure, one thing, we're clear on something. On the, um, on the motion to suspend the rules that happened last meeting, I actually did cite the wrong rule and this is something we clarified a little later. Um, and I, and I'll come back to, you know, part of the reason that is, other than me being a human being, um, is that ultimately, the key part is, which wasn't mentioned earlier today, is that I actually got the decision right. Um, I just cited the wrong rule while doing it. There are rules, uh, in Robert's Rules of Order that if, if it protects a minority, which in this case, there's a minority of one, um, then, uh, anyone, any one member on the school board can stop, um, uh, from being added to the agenda for a vote. That makes everyone on the board a minority of one. And if you're suspending the rules of a minority, then ultimately, uh, it has to be more than the minority that approved that rule. And so in this case, since everyone is a minority of one on this board, in that particular case, it would have to be unanimous. Uh, to be clear, the entire board was on the email, uh, back from the parliamentarian that said I was right on that. So ultimately, even though I cited the wrong rule, uh, the decision was ultimately correct. Um, and so there was a little bit of confusion on my side, um, as, as far as citing the wrong, the wrong rule, but ultimately the decision was made correctly. Um, and I want to make one thing perfectly clear, the parliamentarian thing gets thrown around quite a bit here. Um, I, I don't think, uh, thinking back to all the time someone has cited a parliamentarian on this board, I don't think at any point in time that wouldn't have been resolved with prior communication and making sure, and instead of, instead of trying to throw things on the dais at the last minute. Ultimately, uh, I've talked with many board members from across the state. Fairfax County, I believe, has a rule that, uh, that there's no, there's no amendment, your amendments have to be announced a couple days ahead of time so everyone has time to review them and look at them. And, and so then, the whole goal of to not surprise each other on the board. Um, and other, and other boards have, have that as well. So I, I think that was an interesting, interesting conversation. So, um, you know, I think we need to constantly look at that. I mean, uh, you know, I know, I know we like to talk to each other up here and along the lines of, uh, of what happened a little earlier, I, I agree. I think actually, Ms. Williams, I, I think it was one of the, uh, best things that I've listened to you talk about, uh, in a long time as far as decorum, decorum on the dais. Um, you know, as the chair, I, I've, I've let people go quite a bit. I, I think, I think we're all individually elected officials and we have the right to kind of speak our mind and I certainly, uh, don't run a super tight ship that way when I allow members to speak. Um, with that being said, you know, maybe it's time to start, uh, maybe it's time to start ruling members out of order for, for attacking people on the dais. And if then, you know, if someone wants to try to challenge that decision on, on the dais and they want to overrule me and allow members to continue to attack people, then that's certainly the will of the board that I can't prevent. But, um, you know, board matter time, boards matter time is clearly not intended for that, it's for, it's for the betterment of the school system. Um, it's, it's a little sad where it's become. I, honestly, I've let it go because it was on me, because people were attacking me. And you know what? I don't care. You can have at me all day, you know, me call for my resignation for the twenty-fifth time, it doesn't bother me in the slightest. But the reality is, is that, that this isn't, this isn't, this isn't the place for it to use taxpayer funds to do that type of stuff. You want to, every one of us, most of us have personal Facebook pages or, or, or pages that we can use to communicate that. And if you want to do it that way, that's certainly, certainly your discretion. But, um, you know, that's, that's one thing that I can maybe, maybe do a little more strongly. Like I said, if the board wants to overrule that and allow people to attack each other, then, then that's certainly their will. But, uh, maybe we need, it's just time, time to, it's a time to, time to put an end to it. So, um, ultimately, uh, it was a long meeting.